Good morning. This, the Wednesday, April 3rd, meeting of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners is called to order. If you'll please join me in a brief moment of silence. And now, as you're able, if you'll please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Before, I'd like to make a motion that we remove item E6, which is a request for a public hearing to consider the adoption of the UDO. I'd like to make a request that that be removed from the agenda, please.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to remove that item from the agenda. Not to move it, but to move that item from the agenda. And I have a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Is the motion to the effect of also approving the agenda as amended that way?
No, no. I'm making a simple motion.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion? Okay. So, the motion is to remove item E6 from the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Thank you. So, that's three to two. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So, we have an agenda. The next item on our agenda is recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, we have a couple of recognitions of new employees in the Police Department with Police Chief Bill Webster.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you this morning for allowing us to recognize a couple of new employees. First of all, I'm going to recognize Brian Bradley. Brian joined the department on November 19, 2018. He's originally from Haywood County, North Carolina. He served four years in the Marine Corps, my beloved Corps. He was with FAST Company in the Marine Corps. And if you know anything about the Marine Corps, FAST Company was basically set up, they're sort of like a first responder out to embassies around the world. So, if there's an embassy that's in crisis, they'll send out FAST Company to augment their forces. Did I get that right? Just a little bit. After leaving the Marine Corps in 1993, he moved to the Outer Banks. He currently lives in Manio with his wife Stephanie and two sons. He has a son, 18, and a son that's 22. He began his law enforcement career with Currituck County Sheriff's Office, and served 18 years there as a K-9 officer, SWAT, and narcotics officer. He holds an advanced certificate in law enforcement from North Carolina Training and Standards. Brian left Currituck and went to work with Blackwater LLC in security for the US government, doing contracts overseas. Upon return, he went to work with Vicod police at Outer Banks Hospital, and now is with us. In his time off, he enjoys hunting, fishing, and spending time with his family. Welcome aboard.
Yes, sir. Thanks, sir.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Welcome aboard. Good to see you.
And the next officer is Alex Liverman. And I like the fact that we hired Alex because I'm no longer the department rookie. Well, technically, Alex isn't either. We've got another officer that's in the process, but Alex is our newest officer. He joined the department on March 5th of this year. He was born in Washington, North Carolina, and currently lives in Columbia. Alex graduated from Columbia High School in 2012 and the College of Albemarle Basic Law Enforcement Training Program in 2017. Alex possesses a general law enforcement certificate through North Carolina Training and Standards. He was employed for a year and a half as a deputy with Terrell County Sheriff's Office. He's a member of the US Naval Reserve. He's been with them since 2013. And he serves as a quartermaster in the Navy Reserve, and he's responsible for navigation and ship's deck logs. I imagine along with other few things that they have you do. In his time off, Alex enjoys traveling, deer hunting, and riding ATVs. Welcome aboard, Alex. Thank you, Bill. And as y'all can see from these two gentlemen, like I said last month, we continue to really attract some candidates with some good experience. And I think it's through, you know, your support with training and that we continue to be able to do that. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief. Next, calling Public Works Director Ralph Baril to recognize Heath Taylor for his five years of service.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure this morning to recognize Heath for his five years of service here with the town. Heath started with the town back in 2014. Since he's been here, he has achieved his water distribution certificate in C certificate and B certificate. He also has his certificate in responsible person and cross connections. Heath is also a part of our safety team up at Public Works. Heath goes around, checks the buildings, all the smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and things like that. When Heath isn't here working, you can either find him in the woods hunting or in the sound in his kayak fishing. So, without further ado, Heath, thank you for the five years.
Thanks, Ralph. Calling the interim Fire Chief, come forward and recognize James Mosman, Fire Captain, for 15 years of service.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing James Mosman to be recognized today for his 15 years of service to the Town of NAGS Head. What I was trying to say there was, is he started when he was 17 years old as a volunteer firefighter back in Virginia, in Stuart Strath, Virginia. So, 17 years old, long time in the fire service, just definitely a proud moment here as well to move forward and give us another 15 so far. James is always willing to help with projects as needed and has had several collateral duties over the last 15 years. He's been our training officer. He's been over communications where he manages all the maintenance needs of our radio system and programming and research of new projects and future parts and pieces for that system. As we know right now, that's a pretty big project we have going on. James is also a certified fire instructor, fire officer level three, driver operator, and is a level three fire inspector. And he has attended many National Fire Academy courses. He is also qualified to teach the driver operator program and technical rescue classes. His most recent accomplishment was completion of the fourth year of the North Carolina Fire Prevention School, where I attended the graduate level class. This is a great benefit as a fire inspector to receive this training that's not offered but once a year in Carolina Beach, North Carolina. So, James, congratulations on that accomplishment as well. James, a little-known secret about James, he's somewhat of a gourmet cook. He enjoys cooking large meals at the fire station. He's a perfectionist, if you will. He always enjoys cooking for holidays and different things, and we're grateful to have him in that capacity. But, James, congratulations on your 15 years of service to the town, and we're hoping for at least another 15 years more.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, James. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll call Police Chief back up to recognize Police Officer Christian Agiri for his advanced law enforcement certificate.
Thank y'all once again. If y'all may recall, Christian was recognized at the last board meeting for his drug recognition expert accomplishments. Christian's been with the department since 2017, and since this time, he has continuously sought training and instructorships. As noted previously, I just alluded to, as a drug recognition expert, he also serves on the countywide emergency response team. He has managed to obtain his advanced law enforcement certificate through the North Carolina Justice and Standards. An officer can qualify for this certificate if he or she, first of all, meets the requirements for the intermediate certificate, which he has, and also has accumulated a combination of education, training, points, and experience to complete the advanced level. And with all he has going on in the world, with being a DRE and serving the department and many, many other facets, plus being, you know, a family man with a very young child, you know, he's got his hands full, and his hard work is very appreciated. But I'm going to present him with this certificate. I'm going to read it real quick. It says, "To all whom these presents may come, greeting be it known that in recognition of the attainment of training and educational objectives commensurate with the role of a professional criminal justice officer and a personal devotion in service to the people of North Carolina, the Attorney General and the Chairman and members of North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission, through the authority vested in them by the laws of the state, do hereby award Christian Matthew Agiri this advanced law enforcement certificate."
Congratulations. Very well done. Yes, I appreciate it.
See you guys again.
Great job. Get him to be a regular. We'll see him back up here again soon. And finally, we'll call the Deputy Town Manager Andy Gorman to recognize Alan Massey for his retirement from our information technology department.
Good morning, Alan. I'm sure Alan's happy to be here in this capacity this morning. It's much more relaxing, I'm sure. So, today, we're honored to recognize Alan Massey for his retirement from the Town of NAGS Head. Alan started his employment on November 15, 1999, as the Management Information Systems Assistant. He was hired by Town Manager Webb Fuller and worked with Jim Northrop, the town's MIS Coordinator at the time. IT professionals certainly have an enormous task of keeping up with an ever-changing industry. It's certainly interesting to think about the changes that have occurred since Alan came to work with the town. Common back then were floppy disks, dial-up internet, transparency slides, bag phones, the Sony Walkman, and disposable cameras. I'm sure Alan spent much, much time and effort securing the town's resources from the pending crisis of Y2K. After several years with the town, Alan was promoted to the position of MIS Coordinator in 2006. New challenges in technology were emerging for Alan, and his responsibility certainly increased. The town began relying more on wireless technology and smartphones to conduct business and improve internal and external communications. Networks were improving, and social media began to take off. I think this was the year Facebook started. There was still Internet Explorer and no Google Chrome. Many employees had been using cell phones for years and were now using phones for email and messaging. In a few years, the ease of 24/7 communications were dramatically improved. This changed the landscape for IT professionals, who now needed to make sure these devices and networks they utilize were always available. Alan took great personal responsibility for the town's network and infrastructure. Throughout his career with the town, there were many long periods of time where he was either the only IT person on staff or only had part-time help. We leaned on him heavily and spent many weekends, he spent many weekends rebooting servers, conducting updates, and troubleshooting problems. He always made sure our systems and data were secure and redundant and found cost-effective ways to manage our IT functions. We never found Alan hard to get a hold of, even when he was off or on vacation, and he was always available to handle issues. In recent years, we've seen viruses, ransomware, and other threats take down servers and websites and other places. We've managed to stave off those issues primarily due to Alan's diligence. Alan has certainly been a dedicated employee for the last 20 years and will be missed by all. Alan, thank you for your service. It's truly appreciated, and we hope you enjoy your retirement.
And before the board leaves, I think, were there a couple other? You got another flag? You got a flag?
For James Mosman, Christian.
Did Christian take all? Christian, okay. All right. We'll do that one to press him down. Way better than that. The next item on the agenda is public comment, and I'll turn this over to Attorney Lighty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the NAGS Head, Mayor and Board of Commissioners will accept and receive public comments. Those are comments from members of the public. I'd like to remind everyone that this is not an opportunity for a dialogue with the board. The board typically does not respond to any comments that people provide. It's simply an opportunity to address your comments to the board as a whole. I would also point out that if you are here to make comments on something that's scheduled for a public hearing, and we do have a public hearing scheduled later on in the agenda, you can reserve your comments until that particular item. But for anybody who does wish to address the board during public comment, this is your opportunity. If you'll please go to the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board.
Good morning. David Bragg. I live in the Village of NAGS Head, not the West Village or the East Village, because we don't have the Cove called the South Cove or the North Cove. It's all the village. My comments will be a little bit cryptic because I was working with Andy last night until approximately 4:30 to get some additional information. But as I speak, I would like to address a couple of things and have a couple of things in your mind. First of all, talking about the green stickers on the garbage cans and recycling. A lot of older people come down here for vacation. They don't have a smartphone. They don't bring a laptop. So, how are they going to know what day collection is? There is no date on the new stickers. So, I'd like you to take that into consideration and put a day of collection on that rather than having to have the person go out to the garbage can with a smartphone or look it up online. That doesn't make a lot of sense when you have people that don't bring that type of equipment with them. Secondly, I'd like to address, keep in your mind, as I'm asking my questions, think about the people that come down here and come down here for seafood and eat shrimp and have a couple baskets of crab, and they put them out in their garbage, and they sit there for a week in 100-degree temperature. I don't think you'd like to have that next door to you or underneath your house. So, with that being said, I'd like to just address the questions, and as the attorney said, you'll answer them at a later date. But first of all, I'd like to know, were you able to review the cost-benefit analysis for the additional day of recycling and the additional day of north area trash collection prior to making the change to the current schedule? We were dropped one day. The Cove remains with two-day collection, and the north area picked up a day. We lost a day, and recycling in the blue area picked up a day. So, I just wanted to know if you were able to look at that cost and benefit analysis. Secondly, were you able to review the time and motion study to include such things as improved routes, better placements of cans, improvements to trucks, prior to making these changes? Third, were you able to review the tonnage per neighborhood to include the dumpsters in the village? Because there are many dumpsters throughout the village that are picked up, I believe...
Four times a week, Andy?
Four times a week. So, if that tonnage is added into the village tonnage, it gives a totally different picture. Fourthly, were you able to review the cost per neighborhood for trash collection prior to making this decision? As I've tried to find out, you can't find out. You can't find out the tonnage per neighborhood, and you can't find out the cost per neighborhood. Yet, a decision was made to reduce ours by one day, increase one by another, and also increase the day, another day of collection for the blue route for recycling. Five, were you able to get the occupancy rate and square footage per rented neighborhood prior to making this decision? There are a lot of houses that are in the Cove that may be rented. They're smaller square footage than the village. So, naturally, you have more people in the house. You're going to produce more garbage, which happens in the village because I happen to live in the village. Thus, my concern. Six, were you able to determine the number of trucks and drivers that it would take to add the north beach area without decreasing the services for other areas, such as the village? Seven, did you cost the outsourcing of the summer collection program for the one day per week, which probably would not be that much? If you take a seven-hour day and multiply it by the cost, I believe the cost was $5.95 a day, it would be a total of $11,900. Now, you may have to go back and talk to people in the trash collection department to figure out if a new truck wouldn't be needed or if additional manpower would be needed. But doing a short study myself this morning, it took 12 seconds for the truck to get to my house, pick up recycling, and dump it and move on to the next house. So, if we extrapolate that out, I don't think it'll be a seven-hour day to pick up all the trash in the village because our streets are much longer and much straighter. The areas that are of concern that would take longer are on the dumpster route because the trucks have a harder time negotiating in there. Although, once recycling started, those same trucks are negotiating in there. So, I don't know how that worked out previously.
Mr. Bragg, you've had your five minutes and an extra 15 seconds.
Oh, I didn't know I was going to be tagged, but just one other comment. Recycling, the cost of recycling is going up $110,000 per year, to bring it to a total cost of approximately $200,000 per year. That would be having 182 homes valued at $360,000. That's how much it's going to cost us to do that program. That program's being dropped by major cities and towns throughout the country because it's not cost-benefit. There's no cost-benefit to it. They are now burning and landfilling all the recycling. So, why did we enter into a three-year contract for $330,000 to have this done while it's being eliminated in many other areas?
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. All right. Next person who wishes to address the board?
My name is Hannah. I work with the Coastland Times, and I live in Wanches. Just wanted to bring addition of our new outlook edition that we published this weekend in this weekend's newspaper. We did a 24-hour theme here on the Outer Banks, what makes this area unique, what's special to this area, and kind of featured some of the unsung heroes that are doing things throughout the entire 24 hours out here in this area. We worked really hard on it. We're really proud of how it turned out and the success that we had with it. We've had a lot of good comments. The Town of NAGS Head was also included in this as well, and I have a copy for each of the board. But also just featured their parks, the farmer's market, and the beach nourishment program that they have in place. I think it turned out as a great product. So, I have enough for the board, and I do have enough probably for the public as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katon. All right, next. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Don't be shy. This is your opportunity. All right. If not, at this time, we will close the public comment session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lighty. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, from which item six was previously removed. So, a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the change so recognized.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public hearings, item F, regarding the regulation of short-term rentals with a registration process. This will be done by Andy and Attorney Lighty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will open the public hearing to consider some ordinance amendments, particularly amendments to chapters 12 and 48 of the town code. And this is a legislative matter, and so there's no requirement for sworn testimony or people being under oath. But we will begin the hearing by receiving the staff's analysis presented by Deputy Town Manager Andy Gorman.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, thank you. We are this morning discussing a proposed registration program for short-term rentals, something the board has been discussing for some time now, as well as the planning board has been analyzing the issue. We spent a lot of time reviewing best practices, certainly in other communities nationwide, as well as within the state of North Carolina. The town has spent a lot of time with school of government researching the topic of regulating short-term rentals, as well as deciding the appropriate level of regulation that the town wishes to look at for this issue. Essentially, what we've ended up with is a simple registration program. Certainly, some communities across the country and in other parts of the state are taking more of a permitting approach to this. I think the town is looking at this from more of an information sharing and education standpoint at this point in time. When the board first began discussing this, it was obviously an issue a lot of communities were facing with the emergence of a lot of the online rental platforms, such as Airbnb, HomeAway, and other VRBO companies. It certainly facilitated the ability of individuals to rent their homes, either a whole house or a part of their home, to other people without any assistance. And so, as people are beginning to do this, some may be aware of all the requirements, laws, ordinances that may apply to them, and some may not. And then, some may choose to ignore them. So, part of this process would be to inform individuals who are renting properties, either whole house or partial house, of these requirements. I think this is the primary reason the board is doing this or looking at this issue. One of the governing laws in North Carolina that deals with this is the North Carolina Vacation Rental Act. And basically, anyone who's renting property for periods of 90... And basically, anyone who's renting property for periods of 90 days or less is subject to this law. Whether you're a licensed real estate person or not, you're considered a landlord. And then with that law, you're required to comply with certain provisions of the law, including providing a safe and fit premises for your tenants, to keep it in a habitable condition, to make sure the, there's no issues with plumbing, electrical, HVAC, or having proper smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. The ordinance deals with making people aware of the occupancy and sales tax requirements that apply in Dare County as well as the state of North Carolina. Some of the online companies remit the tax such as Airbnb. We know that others such as VRBO leave that to the property owner to remit. And so that's something we want to make everyone aware of, the requirements to do that. So as I just mentioned, the goal is to provide education and information sharing. Again, Vacation Rental Act, occupancy and sales tax. We certainly would like people to understand insurance requirements. Your normal homeowner's policy does not cover your house or liability for operating it as a short-term rental and you would need to look at having additional insurance to cover that. You're certainly, I believe, not required to have the insurance, but it's certainly something that the owner should be aware of as well as the tenants who are staying in the property. And the last point is to provide the town with contact information for operators to address issues that may arise. So, the ordinance itself, we're looking at an amendment to chapter 12 of our town code which deals with business and licensing. The ordinance establishes a definition for a short-term rental. This is, by our ordinance, a property that's rented for a period of 30 days or less. We define partial house rentals, which include obviously renting a portion of the home while the owner or a resident is on the premises. Whole house rentals is essentially what it says, renting the entire house where the owner does not live on the premises. The ordinance requires an annual registration of properties, either partial house or whole house. Hotels, motels, and properties managed by licensed real estate brokers would not be required to register. The North Carolina Vacation Rental Act deals with these different groups in additional, providing additional requirements and responsibilities for those groups. And so, I think, working through this process, the planning board felt like it wasn't necessary to apply the registration to those individuals. I'm having trouble reading the slides there. Can you blur that up a little bit? I'm sorry. I'll bring my glasses next. Can you go back to the last slide? Property owner would be required to provide, obviously, their contact information and a point of contact if they're not local. We're asking them to provide a point of contact, but that would not necessarily be required to register. We're asking, in the registration process, that they disclose whether or not they have the additional insurance necessary to operate the property as a short-term rental. We'd like the operator owners to acknowledge that they're aware of all the requirements of the North Carolina Vacation Rental Act as well as the requirements to comply with all the sales and occupancy tax requirements. And as part of the registration process, staff would certainly provide this information in a brochure pamphlet to the applicants. Whole house rentals and partial house rental parking requirements, the ordinance does talk about that. When we developed our parking requirements for whole house, single-family dwellings, the parking is based on the number of bedrooms minus two. So if you have an eight-bedroom rental home, you're required to have six parking spaces. At the time the board adopted that ordinance, it felt, the board felt like that was sufficient to manage a rental property. We did look at a partial home rental and having one additional parking space in those situations. And what the planning board felt like in that situation was, in most cases, those are going to be the smaller homes where the owner or a resident lives on the property. And typically, those properties would have only had to have two parking spaces when they were permitted. When you consider most homes have at least two vehicles, the planning board felt like it was reasonable to require at least one additional parking space for the partial house rental. The other issue is the definition of bed and breakfast, and we had talked about this with the board previously. Currently, we have a definition for bed and breakfast which captures in the past partial home rentals. If you were renting your house to guests that were on the property, you were considered a bed and breakfast by our ordinance definition, which only allows those in the C2 general commercial zoning district. And the C2 general commercial zoning district, for those that don't know, is generally between the highways. It doesn't include the west side neighborhoods west of US 158. So, the planning board was in sort of a conundrum with this definition. Obviously, this definition was capturing most every type of short-term rental in the town that was a partial house rental. The planning board, after doing the survey, felt it was appropriate to recommend amending this definition. So essentially, if you're a partial house rental, you wouldn't be classified as a bed and breakfast until more than two rooms are rented. And the planning board felt like that would alleviate that conflict that existed with the original bed and breakfast ordinance. With that said, most of, the partial house and the whole house, short-term rentals would be allowed in every zoning district where we allow, single-family dwellings, based on this ordinance. And so, the primary, the primary aspect of this ordinance is the registration process itself. There would not be any permits issued per se as part of the registration and town would not be doing any inspections of any properties. So with that said, I can certainly answer any questions. We certainly have a lot of people here that would like to talk about this.
Does the board have any questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
The board, I was just going to ask the same question. Any board member questions before Andy waves the podium?
I'd like to ask, just a clarification. I know the answer to this, but some property management companies do list all their rentals on Airbnb. They're exempt from this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, any member of the public who wishes to comment on this, on these proposed ordinance amendments may do so. If you, again, if you'll please approach the podium, tell us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the board as a whole.
Hi. I'm Candace George. I live in the Town in Agshead. And thank you for hearing me. Thank you to the employees and you for your work for the town. I am not against Airbnb or HomeAway or any privately managed weekly or monthly rentals, vacation rentals. But I am against those weekly or monthly vacation rentals in established year-round residential neighborhoods. I live in a neighborhood where we have young people and retired folks. We have blue collar workers, CEOs. We have people living alone and people raising families. We have natives who were born and raised here and those newcomers who may have been here less than two years. We know the beach is a tourist attraction. We appreciate and welcome respect and admiration for it, for anybody who will come and visit. We realize that our economy is based on vacationers. We are in some way all a part of that industry. We are as many people here, a year-round community of caring and involved citizens. But most importantly, we are, in two senses of the word, neighbors. We who choose to live separate and apart from where the vacationers are lodging are as much a contributor to our community as those who choose to have and live off of weekly or monthly rentals for vacationers. I think there is and always has been a place for all of us here in the Town in Agshead. And I would ask the Commissioners and those who are making decisions on the zoning ordinance to include our position and have respect and consideration for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Would anyone else care to comment?
I'm Amanda Hooper. I do not live in Agshead. I do live in unincorporated Dare. There's so many thoughts on this particular subject. And when I first saw it come up, I was really concerned about how one town can set a precedent for the rest of the county. So I just have jotted down some bullet points. I didn't really come in with an agenda today, so I just kind of wanted to see what everybody was doing and then give my input. On the bullet point number one that you had, the very first one, it listed something as a 30-day or less. Technically, occupancy tax is required at 90 days or less. So if that is going to actually become something that the town accepts, it should probably be in line with the tax requirements. Just a general question, what is the benefit of collecting all the information by the individual towns? And how is the town affected by homeowner's insurance policies? I've been renting Airbnb since 2012. Actually, Airbnb wasn't even a thing back then. And to go to Ms. George's point, my first Airbnb was in a year-round neighborhood and it was not something by choice. It was the only way that I could make ends meet. So I had to leave my home in order to make ends meet. So to take that income opportunity away from property owners, I don't think is really fair. Next point would be, is that parking requirement also going to apply to property managers? Is that one of the answers to?
Parking applies to any property.
To all properties? And I don't think that that's a bad thing. I think that we have a real parking problem here. I think we have a real transportation problem here. But I think we just need to make sure that that applies across the board. And when we talk about the property managers versus individual property owners, Airbnb and VRBO were established in flip key as well. Were established to allow individual homeowners an opportunity to make income. When we flood that marketplace with property managers, it really, it changes the game for everybody. They are, when I hire a housekeeper, she makes $100 a house. When I hire somebody who cuts the grass, they're making $50 a yard. When I worked for Twitty, I made like $35 a house. So most of us that are individual homeowners are actually paying a higher income to our supporting staff. And then my only last point, and hopefully that, there's so many people in this room, hopefully they'll come up and talk to you. My only last point is about the bed and breakfast. I don't have any partial homes that I rent. I only rent whole homes. But I do have a lot of friends that are in the partial home rental business. And I have a question about, if a home is rented and no meals are prepared for the guest and no shared kitchen space is allowed, regardless of the number of rooms that are rented, how can it be deemed a bed and breakfast? That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Hooper. Next.
I just have a short comment. My name is Marsha Johnson. I'm from Kill Double Hills. I've been sharing my home with international students since 2005. This hasn't seemed to be an issue with the community. Sharing your home with people like that gave them a safe haven and that was an original beginner in the ministry of the Pathways International. Pathways kind of oversaw these students and those students had someone to go to for any problems at all with the landlord or with what to do and how to do and where to be and that sort of thing. We had to overcome a lot of, a lot of issues. Since 2005, I also needed that income to survive on the Outer Banks to just make ends Airbnb is our pathways, is our place to go to. There are hotel front for registration for people, for our problems and complaints. They are always there on the phone with us if we have any kind of issues from a bad tenant, which in four years, I've never had one tipsy, I've never had one drunk. They drive nice cars, they're well-educated people. I've not had one problem other than a bad sheet. So I would suggest that you really look at this as something that really provides for our community. Some of us have lived here a long, long, long time. This is where we call home. And because of the cost of living has gone up so much, we can't stay here either in our neighborhoods if we don't have an extra income. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, next. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board on this set of ordinances? Yes, sir.
My name's Steve George. I've lived in Agshead for quite a number of years, in the Outer Banks for 43 years now. And I just have a question. And I guess this would maybe go to the town attorney. Does this ordinance overrule HOA covenants where my wife and I live that say there is no rentals allowed other than year-round? That's just something I've got a question about. And I'd like an answer when you get a second, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, Bob Oaks, live at 3019 South Virginia Dare Trail, resident of Agshead since 1984. I'm in the property management business. And at first glance, this is, this is something where you're trying to get an even playing field. I think it's to everybody's advantage to have everybody that is doing short-term rentals pay their occupancy tax and state sales tax. I think this method may be a little bit clumsy. I'd encourage you to perhaps look at a voluntary census to start off with. It might be a good job for a summer intern. All these places, most of these places are listed online, so they're not terribly difficult to find. You've got to winnow out the ones that are managed by property managers. But I think really the, the issue with short-term rentals, whether it's a professional property manager or an individual, is the effects on the neighbors. And that tends to be parking, noise, those type of things. I would be very curious to see what kind of actual complaints you've received on properties that are either, either property managers or individuals. Because I think that's really what should be driving, driving the train, is the impacts on the neighbors. It is far easier for a property manager to be there, and that's, that's why we exist, is there are a lot of people from out of town that own these properties. So, with that said, I just think it's a little bit cumbersome and frankly, a little concerned about it being a camel's nose under the tent as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. All right, any, any further comment? Any further at all? All right. If not, we will conclude the public hearing on this matter and the board may deliberate on these proposed amendments.
Before I open it to the board, I wonder if you could, do you have an initial thought about the question of the impact on covenants in neighborhoods?
Well, I think the ordinance would have the same effect as any ordinance, and that is that, to the extent it's inconsistent, or that a homeowner's association has covenants that are inconsistent with the ordinance, the ordinance would control. But that does not mean that just because an ordinance authorizes a use, that an association's covenants prohibit or restrict. Those covenants would still apply in that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll ask the board, is it your pleasure to discuss for a moment before putting a motion on the table or put a motion on the table for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any discussion by the board? Mr. Sears.
I think this has been something that's going on in the last almost two years, and the main focus was safety for the homeowners as well as the visitors. And the other focus was, as mentioned, it is very expensive to live on the Outer Banks, and taxes are always something to get more services, as was mentioned earlier in this meeting about recycling. And with the loss of our occupancy tax, taxes will go up. So if we have an onslaught and all these houses move away from the rental companies who pay occupancy tax, then your taxes will go up. And there again, it'll be more unaffordable to live here. So there's a lot more to it. We're not trying to stop it. By all means, everybody needs a source of income to live on the Outer Banks and to live the dream of being at the beach coastal community. But there has to be a happy medium somewhere for safety issues, because although a corporation that is a software company who has no liability, no hard structure, can say they're covering you, your best interest is not in their interest. And so you need to make sure that the insurance for your property is the correct insurance. You need to make sure that you're following the guidelines so you don't get sued, and you need to make sure that the taxes are paid so that everybody that lives here, whether they're doing Airbnb, whether they're an owner from outside the area, can continue to live here in maybe not the most affordable tax situation, but in an affordable situation. And this is the efforts of a lot of people to come to this. An internship, Mr. Oaks was mentioned and brought up, and the cost of the internship or the voluntary status was out there. And the survey that was put out there was, well, I mean, a lot of folks participated in that. So it's been well-thought-out on that end of it, and it's not something that is written in stone, and we don't by any means want to sit here and say, "You can't do this. We're trying to fix that housing issue." So yeah, I think it'll move forward with evolution of change as things progress, but it just, it needs to go someplace so that we can get a handle on it before it gets way past the fact that, let's just say, your house burns down, you don't have the proper insurance, a loss of life happens, you lose your house, your insurance company won't cover it, where do you go from there? So that extra 15 grand that year really helped, but it cost you your life. So that's our concern, and we don't want to see that throughout the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Renee.
Part of it came about because there were neighborhoods, such as Mr. George may have referenced, that have covenants and HOAs, and people were adding on to houses, converting them. The town gets notified. If it was done illegally, the town could step in. But the HOAs and covenants are enforced by your homeowners' association. This ordinance does not overstep them. If your ordinance says nothing more than year-round rentals, that's what you have. But it's up to the homeowners' association to enforce their covenants and rules, and you must enforce them equally for everybody, not just against one or another. We recognize that Airbnb pays the occupancy tax. We also recognize that some of the others do not, and that's slipping through the cracks. And that has an impact on everybody's community, because the services are being provided, but the tax revenue's not coming in. And that's one of the things we're trying to get a handle on, as well as trying to make homeowners aware that if you want to do these other options, Airbnb, VRBO, you've got to have better insurance on your property to account for that. I was in the office recently where that was being discussed. And nobody wants any accidents or any loss of life, but we also want property owners to have the proper coverage that they should have for the safety of the people that are going to be in the homes. So this is not an ordinance to try to regulate, it's a try to, it's an ordinance to understand what's being rented, where it's being rented, and make sure the homeowners are aware of all the things that they need to provide as well to the people that they're going to rent to. It's not all about the income coming in, it's also about the liabilities that go with it.
Thank you. Mr. Walters.
I'd just like to add a little bit to what everyone else has said. This has been an ongoing discussion for approximately two years. We have met with the county, we have had an online workshop here that people were invited to. The county at the EMS building in Manio had, we had an interactive workshop across the state regarding this issue and how different areas are dealing with it. And there are vast differences. I don't think anybody here wants to be heavy-handed. I think largely our concern has been public safety, information, providing you with the information you need regarding your legal responsibilities and requirements and tax collection, and also for the people that stay with you. They need to know that you're meeting those requirements as best you can. So, you know, we assume everybody knows everything, but they don't. So this effort will give you the information you need to do it properly and provide us with a contact in case, God forbid, something does happen to a home. It's on fire, who do you contact, who you... Or, you know, somebody's been injured. It's just a registration, that's all. We did do a survey, we had, of town residents, we had 581 responses, to be exact. It was a 13-page survey. It's on our website, on our packet information today. I encourage any of you to look at that, to see what those responses were. There are also additional comments that citizens made about that. So this is not a knee-jerk reaction for us. It has been approximately a two-year, well-thought-out process. Our planning board has worked diligently on this. They've also received input from citizens in addition to this. So it's really to benefit all parties. It's not a heavy-handed attempt at anyone. It's just largely public safety and education.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to understand my personal feelings about this, I would just ask you to look at the video and see what Ms. George said, because that's my personal feeling. Now, once we get beyond that, I've got a job. And I am an owner of a short-term vacation rental. It is not in Dare County, it's elsewhere. I have to do all these things where I'm have my vacation rental already. So I don't see it as a burden. The one thing I do see that I saw, that I think was only different, was when we went from a vacation house to a short-term rental, we were required to change the insurance. So, and I heard today that that wasn't a requirement. I don't know if that's true. But we were required to change our insurance.
You are.
So I'm just very supportive of this, because I think it gives us a handle on what we need to do right now. I'm not saying this is the last step, for me.
I agree in terms of not necessarily being the last step. This is a situation, you'll remember that a few months ago, this board took the action of regulating and prohibiting actually the rideshare scooters. Unfortunately, the short-term vacation rental was a curve that we fell behind, and that populated, the popularity of that activity exploded here. And we are concerned about the safety factor. We'd like to know where they are, so that when first responders go there, they know who might be in one of these houses. We want the opportunity to educate the public, the property owners, so that they are not injured by failing to comply with an insurance requirement or something that might have a negative impact on them. So we'll know where they are, and we'll continue to, as we do with all aspects of the ordinance, police the externals that have impact on the neighbors of traffic, noise, and that sort of thing. So with that, we have a motion to approve as presented. We have a second for that. Is there any further discussion by the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The... Yes, I'm sorry. We will, the board will take a short break. Let's come back in about five minutes. Thank you. All right, the board will come back to order. The next item on our agenda would be reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. I'm happy to provide you an update on the focused Unified Development Ordinance. The technical committee met on March 7th and completed their review of comments that have been made, both by the technical committee, the planning board, as well as the board of commissioners. These items needed additional feedback from the technical committee. I have included those in an attachment with the memo in your board packet. We are also concluding the changes, making the final changes to the document, as well as drafting the final diagrams. There's a review by our attorney underway of specific sections of the ordinance that we need feedback on. We have a community meeting set for next Thursday, March 11th. Staff members and the committee will be available to answer any questions from the public. There'll be a brief presentation at 6:00, but an open house from 5:30 to 7:30. Also in the packet is an updated, a snapshot of the schedule that we've been working off the past several months in order to complete the UDO. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When will, when could the board have in hand their copy that we would be expected to carry forward for action?
With all the changes set forth? I'm expecting to have a conversation actually this afternoon with the consultant to finalize additional issues and possibly next week, sometime for the actual wording. I don't know as far as how long for diagrams to be finished and included, but I would think within the next week or two that that would be wrapped up. I think our intent for the community meeting was to bring, to bring forward the draft that was made available in December, along with all the comments that are attached in the memo, and that be what's made available at the time of community meeting.
Our intent, if you had have had the public hearing in May, would have given you your document 10 days in advance of that public hearing. Are we still able to, that'd be 10 days back from the May meeting?
Okay.
Is that agreeable?
I just need to know.
Yeah.
And I would like to say, and I'm not going to say it now, I'll just wait till it's on the agenda to say it, but I got a number of points to be made about that process.
Yes.
So we have already had an opportunity to go through the document and submit comments, which I know the technical committee has since reviewed, and what's in our packet is basically a response to all the comments that we made. So we're going to, we're going to have the community meeting. Eventually, at some point, we're going to have public comment. Are you, when we get the full document again, are you expecting us to make comments on the whole document again? Because we've already approved several sections of the document already. We did one through eight. We've already approved some ordinances that are in there.
And that's my issue, because I have not done that, and I was asked to wait till we got the completed document before I did that by the mayor.
We all got the document a couple of months ago, and we all were asked to submit comments in writing.
Well, I'll bring it up into my agenda, and I've got documentation behind everything also.
Okay.
The only thing I request is that we get the document in a timely manner so that we can read the document before we have any vote to approve. I just don't want to get it like a, I'm glad Cliff said 10 days, but the longer we have to read it, the better we are. I just don't want it Friday before Wednesday meeting.
If 10 days, 10 business days would be the 19th of April?
I really wasn't prepared to answer that question. I would need to talk with our consultant and as well as staff. We have other members of staff, as well as the attorney, who are working to finalize the document, and so I think it would be best to verify the date with staff and the other members who are working to develop the final draft before we provide a final answer.
Commissioner Sears. All right. So if, after those consultations, if you would, at the earliest opportunity, and Cliff advised the board as to when we would expect to have that document in hand. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Hall.
Thank you.
The next item is stormwater projects.
Yep. David Ryan's unable to be here, so I'm going to pitch it for this one. The update, the three projects that we're working on, the one that's going on now, Project Area One, which is the upstream end of Red Drum Ocean Outflow. That project, the work is replacement of two 30-inch diameter cross-street drainage pipes with a 32-inch by 54-inch reinforced concrete box culvert with 18-inch diameter cross-pipe, drop inlet structures, and other items is going, is commencing, and work is going forward. Last week, there was a, we had to lower a water main, which did disrupt water service to several residential properties and a few businesses. We appreciate and recognize the inconvenience. I think staff did an excellent job of communicating the progress, the interruption, and so forth. So I want to, I want to thank staff and then also thank the patience of the businesses. That's been restored. The work for the water main, like I said, was done Monday evening. We started that at 9:00. We had some weather delays, but it finished up midday on Tuesday. The contract for that project has commenced with installation of the junction box, the reinforced concrete box structures, and the concrete box culvert installation is approximately 75, 75% complete at this time. So, so I think, hate to say it, but I think we're a little bit ahead of schedule. The idea was to be done by Easter at the rate we're going. We will be done by Easter. So project, work continues there. And once that's completed, the contractor will immediately start on the next two project areas, being the area around the village at Nag's Head, Seven Sisters, and then also the water lowering, groundwater lowering pumping project at Nag's Head Acres. So those two will start almost immediately after we complete this project. Staff is continuing to work with Withers Raven now. Obviously, you had a budget workshop and gave some direction at the CIP workshop towards stormwater. We hope to be meeting with DOT to discuss the cost share for the construction projects down around milepost 18 and 19 in South Nag's Head. So we're continuing so that we can have something prepared for this next fiscal year for the remaining projects.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Cliff. The next item on our agenda, item H1, is discussion of a no-wake zone The next item on our agenda, item H1, is discussion of a no-wake zone 600 feet from the shore in the commercial outdoor recreational overlay district.
Thank you. Good morning. We're here to... Back to you to talk about no-wake zones and related provisions. It's my understanding that there was a general concern for conflicts between watercraft operating in the soundside commercial outdoor recreational uses overlay district, but perhaps a specific concern related to conflicts with public access points. So what we wanted to do is lay out for you the current provisions, and I've done that in the memo that you were provided. The current provisions that are applicable to a watercraft operating in this area. As you may recall, the docking facility amendment placed certain restrictions on docking facilities through a conditional use permit process, 200-foot limitation on piers and slips, requirement that there be 30 inches of water depth, and a docking facility has a no-wake zone of 600 feet. We do believe that that 600-foot no-wake zone would only be applicable to that particular facility and the users of that facility. Additionally, we laid out existing provisions in the code, in the town code, and then below that, in the state statutes pertaining to this. Under chapter four of the town code, you have a prohibition on watercraft operating within 600 feet of residentially developed property. This is applicable to personal watercraft, jet skis, that may be operating in that area. But then you have several provisions that are not applicable to those users. For instance, under C... This is chapter eight, section 8-4. C, speed. Those operators within that area, the last sentence there, are exempt from a prohibition on proceeding straight in and straight out within 600 feet of a shoreline. The next provision does apply to those operators where they're prohibited, personal watercraft, any operator, whether it's a personal operator or a rental operator. They're prohibited from operating within 50 feet of a person or person in the water or of a non-motorized vessel. And then on the next page, there's a prohibition which does apply... Excuse me. The first prohibition exempts, and this would exempt them from operating within 600 feet of the shoreline. That does apply to any other user, but exempts the commercial outdoor recreational uses. So we go back and forth between exempted and applied provisions in the town code, and then there are applicable provisions also in the state statute that prohibit operations of personal watercraft within 100 feet of an anchored or moored vessel, dock, pier, swim, float. That would apply to these facilities and these operators. And then the last provision, which there's several parts to, but perhaps the most relevant one is that any operator is prohibited from approaching within 100 feet to the rear, 50 feet to the side, of another vessel that is underway, and there's some exemption for operating within a narrow channel. So several provisions which may address the board's concern with respect to conflicts within this area, but I've also highlighted in my recommendation several areas where the board may want to consider amending current regulations to remove the exemption, to perhaps increase some of the distances that are applicable to operating within the proximity to persons or to other non-motorized vessels. But I think the two main pieces would be to amend chapter 8-4, speed one, to remove the exemption that currently exists, and then under chapter 8, 8-4, personal watercraft, D, to also remove that exemption that allows for those users to operate within 600 feet of the shoreline, even though other users are prohibited from doing so. We've provided you with the draft ordinance. Before I move to that, there is also a housekeeping matter. There's a reference to a section in the state statutes that's been changed. I believe in 1999, it was deleted and replaced by a new section that applies to personal watercraft, so there would be a need to update that. Another consideration for the board is that some of these issues, and I did gain some context looking at the minutes and discussing it with Andy as well, some of these issues may be a better addressed when you consider a specific conditional use permit application. I acknowledge that there may be larger issues that the board is interested in addressing through amendments such as this, but we have given you a map that shows the area, and I'm going to see if I can maybe optimize this. Yeah, I may need Andy's glasses. But... Oh, thank you. So the green line is 600 foot, a 600-foot buffer. The yellow is a 400-foot, and the red is a 200-foot. So if you could think about it, any new docking facility could extend their pier out 200 feet. That's a good idea of what that would allow. Currently, again, users of rental facilities are exempted from the prohibition on operating at a speed greater than no-wake within this area, within 600 feet. Other users would have to maintain a no-wake speed in that area. You know, we have been communicating with several operators of facilities in this area of watercraft rental facilities, just making sure they understand what the docking facility amendment allowed, but also making sure they understood what the considerations the board was making for this particular issue. And then we've provided you, again, a draft ordinance that gives you part one, part two, part three, and part four with various options. Part one is the correction of the citation to the state statute. The other parts are what I referenced before in terms of options for the board to consider if they want to look at expanding no-wake provisions and making them applicable more broadly within that area and otherwise in the town. Happy to answer any questions.
Board members?
I mean, I guess you're aware of the great fluctuations of the depth of the water in those areas, whereas 30 inches is fine one day, the wind blows hard north, and then you're looking at 8 inches in some of those areas.
John, can you help me out here?
This is not a public hearing.
Okay. All right.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. So this is time for questions from the board to the staff. That's okay. Thank you. So Commissioner Sears?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Cahoon?
I'm a little confused, and maybe it's just me, but in the memorandum, and I think you referenced it maybe, in 7C1, we talk about personal watercraft going straight in and out, da-da-da, and then in 8-41, we strike out except as in the outdoor commercial recreational overlay district. So are we...
I'm sorry. Which page of the memo?
Page two of six is where 7C1 is, and then in... Looking for eight. Eight, section 8-4, number one.
So I think there's two applicable provisions. So right now, the first provision, chapter four, section 4-2317, "All permitted commercial water activities, including boats, windsurfers, et cetera, shall maintain a distance of at least 600 feet parallel to the estuarine shoreline of any residentially developed property." Oh, my apologies. I think you're referring to the straight in and straight out, so that's...
My section... My question is, on page two of six, 7C1 says, "This section shall not apply to watercraft operating within the commercial outdoor recreational overlay district." And then if you go on down to... Let me find out what page it is.
Five of six.
Page five of six, correct. Thank you, Cliff. We strike out where it says, "This section shall not apply to outdoor recreational overlay." So I'm a little confused.
Sure. So I think what I was showing by the strikeout is you could, if you wanted that section to apply, you could strike that last sentence that does not currently allow for this restriction to apply to those operators.
I think the two differences are that what's on page two is how it currently reads.
Correct.
And on page five is the potential recommendation, if the board chose, would be to strike... Because right now, the 600 feet applies everywhere but the commercial outdoor rec overlay. So on page five, he's suggesting or recommending...
Correct.
...to strike that and have it 600 feet throughout town.
Okay. Well, I'm going to... You asked for comments?
Yes.
I don't like that section being struck because the outdoor recreational district was created for a purpose. It's very limited in use, and that's what it's there for, is for recreation. If we're saying we did the ocean because of the number of people on the shoreline, the outdoor recreation is strictly there for pretty much recreational outdoor use. Either we want the outdoor recreational overlay district, or we don't. And my consensus is, we do. It provides a service to our visiting community. I agree with the issue we had about the pier, and I think we deal with that as a separate matter on a conditional use.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I just want to follow up on the same thing on page five, the staff recommendation. Does that only apply to jet skis? Or are you saying all personal watercraft?
So the regulation applies to personal watercraft, which are defined in the state statute, and those are defined as, "A small vessel that uses an outboard or propeller-driven motor or an inboard motor powering a waterjet pump as its primary source of motive power and which is designed to be operated by a person sitting, standing, or kneeling on or being towed behind the vessel, rather than in the conventional manner of sitting or standing inside the vessel."
Basically, jet skis.
Yes, ma'am.
It only... Personal watercraft really just, even with that definition, really only applies to jet skis at this point in time.
Correct.
So I don't think it's applying to boats or, you know, because you're standing in the boat, you're not kneeling or riding on top of.
At the meeting where the piers for restaurants were heard, you put the no-wake provision for that use, and what you requested was for us to come back with a look at no-wake throughout the entire district. And that's for the safety reasons.
For the safety reasons of, you know, kayaking, paddle boarding, all those other things that are occurring in the exact same area.
You addressed the boats separately that are going, for example, I know we're not supposed to be site-specific, but if you're...
To that.
If you're going to Miller's, you're idling 600 feet from the shoreline to the pier. But what the concern, or what the staff was asked to do was bring back other vessels, personal watercraft, jet skis.
Right. Okay.
And to Commissioner Cahoon's point, it's quite clear to me that reading through this, the history of it, it's specific in a couple of places in the code that the commercial outdoor overlay was purposely exempt for the reasons you said. That's where you wanted the jet skis.
It's where we only had... That's where we had the water to put them. And I realize that as the town has evolved and developed, more uses and more uses and more uses have come into a smaller area, which was one of the concerns we had about piers, but... Maybe we got heavy-handed.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
Just two points real quick. One, how have we traditionally enforced what we have, and what are we going to do to enforce what we may approve? And I know that's not your answer.
That was a question.
The... I mean, one of the primary ways we enforce what we have is typically the code enforcement officer would visit the operators of these commercial outdoor recreational uses and go over with them each year what the requirements are and distribute information to them and then monitor the activity. And so we're not out there on a daily basis watching everything that happens, but we do try to communicate with them and let them know what the requirements are, at least on an annual basis.
So we use more through a planning technique, the code enforcement, than through the police department?
That's right.
And then the second question I have is, if we do make a change, do we have to have Wildlife Resource Commission approval, or have we already talked with Wildlife Resources about this?
So my understanding of that is that if we wanted to establish a no-wake zone that would apply to any watercraft, we would have to work through them, and it would really be them that established us the no-wake zone, not us.
Correct.
But since these regulations in our code mainly deal with personal watercraft, we have separate authority to regulate its personal watercraft, which is why we did it originally in our code. And so what we would be proposing is just to change the regulations that apply to those businesses that are already operating personal watercraft, but it wouldn't be establishing a no-wake zone that would apply to any watercraft. I mean, it wouldn't apply to the private individual who's jet skiing or boating in that area. It would be for the businesses that are running those operations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So what's the board's pleasure on this item? To clarify, Mr. Leidy, this is not subject to a public hearing.
That's correct. Well, it's not right now. I mean, you could schedule a public hearing on the proposed amendments if you wanted to. I think it's just for the board to consider whether you want to consider making some amendments to these various portions of the code, which would require a public hearing. It's just a matter of determining whether you do want to do that, to try to bring them into a more consistent or more uniform status.
Thank you. I stand corrected then. Commissioner Cahoon?
Mayor, the concern that brought this about, if I'm not mistaken, was the proximity of a passive recreation public access being possibly next to a pier with motorized boats.
Yes.
Do we not have the ability, and it may occur on other parts of the causeway, because we have other areas where we have kayak launches and so forth that are going to be next... That are already next to outdoor recreation, which we have not had any... That I'm aware of any issues with. But the one that brought it about is closer. As it moves forward and we get site plans in, we have the ability to put conditions on that. So do we need to... And I appreciate of all the work the staff has done on this, based on board's feedback. Would it not be better to deal with sites condition by condition rather than a blanket ordinance change?
Okay. Thank you. And based on what we've heard, well, in response to your comment about the purpose and nature of the recreation overlay and staff's response that, based on the history that is the reason that it was established, and considering the original concern about the potential conflict with piers, which will be subject to conditional use site plans, I would offer that it does seem as though we have the power to deal with this in those conditional use applications and to establish... conditional use applications and to establish whatever kind of no wake area is required at that point to provide for the safe passage of the boats and the protection of the jet ski operators. Let me ask, does the, does the board wish to have any additional information or input from staff on this proposal for the no wake zone? Or is it the board's wish to essentially table this item until we have a, an application for a pier to consider? Yes, Commissioner Walters.
I do have concerns with taking it piecemeal throughout the entire district as something develops. I think it's easier for enforcement when you have, you know, something that's established the entire way. We don't know what's going to happen in various locations, the event site, those kind of things, you know, what's going to come up in the future. I am concerned about conflict between the more passive recreation that is way more popular today than it was when, you know, the jet ski heyday. Not that everybody doesn't still enjoy jet skis, but the people who have them personally and using them or boats typically have much more experience on a jet ski than someone that comes to rent it for an hour and has a lesson, so, or two hours or whatever. I, I do think the potential for conflicts exists throughout the entire, throughout the entire district, but, you know, it's a board, it's a board decision. I don't know if it changes anybody's business model because the, the no wake zone is extended. It does, just means that you just have to go out further before you pick up speed on a, on a jet ski, so.
All right. Thank you.
While I absolutely share that view, we haven't had the conflict until we suddenly got into the piers and I, and it became apparent side by side. So that's.
We have the potential for 14 of those.
We do have the potential for 14. And it may be that we end up taking some action to address that based on the number of applications we get and the proximity to, we have two sites, I believe, that are passive.
I also have the concern about doing this piecemeal. I'm a little concerned about also doing it preemptively until we have a pier to, to deal with. That doesn't, in my mind, preclude us from when we review the conditional and establish the conditions for the pier, that we establish one form of no wake zone and that then, if it's the board's desire and they see the value to come back to either this or some modified version of this ordinance for a broader no wake zone. So I'll ask the board, is it, we seem to have three options. One is to, to move this ordinance forward, to move this ordinance in a modified version, or to take no action of, on this ordinance and to wait until a future date.
I make a motion we take no action.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to take no action. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The, next item on our agenda is item H2, Discussion of Proposed Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance.
Mayor, may I ask a point of clarification on this?
Yes.
I was not at the last meeting and so, but I understood that what was to be presented today was a proposed accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which is what it says. My understanding is that Commissioner Walters' asked-for ordinance, that was confirmed by you, the mayor, to me, was also confirmed by the manager, and was also confirmed by the town clerk to me, that an ordinance was what was being requested. I reviewed the video, and it was very clear to me that what was being requested is an ordinance. I don't, I did not see, at least in my background information, a proposed ordinance. And I thought it would have been a good idea to have it in an ordinance form to discuss. And I just don't see that we got what the request was. And I don't know how it got from what was approved by the board to what's on the agenda. And so if somebody can explain to me, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Let me see if there are other questions before we.
I have the same question, but.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you. Thank you. Then I'll ask staff.
Well, you know, if assumption on our part, and we know what happens when you assume, but, but the, we tried to present something that would take the form of an ordinance, knowing that you couldn't adopt this ordinance today. We didn't put it in true ordinance form because we, we presented, this presentation is so that you can put it in ordinance form for it to be put into the UDO. Having an ordinance before you in true ordinance form, ready for adoption, isn't something that you're able to do today. So I, you know, I apologize for it not being in that format.
I mean.
I was just gonna say, so can we just go through what has been presented and see what we agree upon to give you more guidance on developing an ordinance?
That's, that's what our hope was, is that once you got to the point where you were comfortable, then we could put the ordinance in the UDO for it to be adopted.
And has our attorney at least reviewed what we've been presented?
I have reviewed it. I have not made a lot of, I don't think I've commented to staff about it, but I have made some notes.
So as we go through it, you can
Yes, ma'am.
comment if needed.
And I'll raise, the things that I have questions about, if y'all don't ask them yourselves, I'll, I'll ask them.
Thank you. Before we let Michael get started, any further comments, questions from the board?
I would just say I'm not prepared because I didn't get what I thought we were supposed to get, so I'm sorry, I'm not prepared.
You didn't read any of it?
I didn't see the ordinance. I was looking for an ordinance.
Thank you.
So my apologies to the board if I didn't provide what was anticipated, but I have given you the draft provisions that are contained in the draft UDO. And I believe what I was trying to do was respond to at least the board's desire to comment on provisions dealing with minimum lot size, maximum unit size, adequacy of septic systems, parking requirements, allowable locations, and impacts on density associated with ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And I apologize for using acronyms. I'll try not to do that. Additionally, the technical committee and planning staff have had input on those issues or some of those issues, but also length of stay, height limits, the location of units on lots, and restrictions on utility service. So again, I've provided in the memo the draft provisions or the provisions that are contained in the draft UDO. And then on the second page, a discussion of each of those topics, and I can go through those very quickly. So minimum lot size, there's not been a discussion by the technical committee or staff on establishing a minimum lot size for accessory dwelling units. My note is, indicates that the draft provisions in the Unified Development Ordinance would not allow traditional building area to be constructed for an ADU, for an accessory dwelling unit, beyond that which is allowed for a single-family dwelling. So essentially, regardless of the size of lot, if you are allowed to construct an accessory dwelling unit, you're not allowed to construct a larger home than you would otherwise be able to construct. So we've not necessarily focused on a minimum lot size requirement. In terms of maximum unit size, the draft Unified Development Ordinance limits the size of accessory dwelling units to 50% of the size of the principal dwelling or 875 square feet, whichever is less. Staff has suggested lowering the maximum limit to 800 square feet, while the technical committee has suggested limiting the size to a maximum of 600 square feet. And some of that is related to what our pier communities in the area are doing, and we've provided a table of those regulations further in the ordinance. We did want to clarify that in terms of limiting size, we would want to reference enclosed habitable living area as opposed to size or simply area, just so that we are using similar terminology throughout the ordinance. Height limits, staff and the technical committee have suggested limiting the height of ADUs. This would really only apply to detached accessory dwelling units or accessory dwelling units that may be in detached structures, that they not exceed one and a half stories. This is really related to a recognition of those units being subordinate to the principal structure, and we can envision and have seen examples of best practices or rather whatnot to do where a subordinate detached structure may have a greater height than the principal structure. Location of units on lot, on lots, staff has suggested inserting a provision in the Unified Development Ordinance under yard requirements for accessory structures, allowing accessory structures with enclosed habitable living area to be located rearward of the midpoint of the principal structure and no closer than 10 feet to any property line. The technical committee has suggested rather that those structures comply with setbacks that would apply to the principal structure. Some considerations here are that a reduced setback for accessory structures incorporating an accessory dwelling unit may allow for greater flexibility in locating such a unit on lot or such a detached structure because of potential conflicts with septic systems and other utilities. Adequacy of septic, we have suggested a provision be added to the ordinance that the owner must obtain a permit from the county health department, county environmental health department indicating the septic system is sufficient. Utility service, we would suggest a provision that would require the accessory dwelling unit in the principal structure to share electrical and water meter service. Parking requirements, the draft UDO currently requires one additional parking space for accessory dwelling units beyond what is required for a single-family dwelling. Allowable locations, the technical committee deferred to the board on this aspect of the ordinance, and staff would welcome your feedback and input from the board on allowable locations for accessory dwelling units within the town. Length of stay, we have considered that it may make sense for accessory dwelling units to be prohibited from being leased or rented for less than 30 days to avoid the units being constructed or created for the sole purpose of being used for short-term rentals. I think that may present a policy question for the board as to whether or not, what the intent of allowing ADUs is. In many communities, they are viewed as a, as a open or possibility for more affordable housing, and if they're competing with, if they're open to being used as short-term rentals, there is a question of whether or not it allows to provide that opportunity for more affordable housing. Density, in general, we look at density maybe in two ways. That density, density that's associated with building mass and density associated with the number of individuals or families that are in a housekeeping unit. With regard to building mass, as I referenced earlier, if a property, if a ADU is allowed to be constructed on a property that doesn't inflate, doesn't allow for a home or a structure to be constructed larger than, without an accessory dwelling unit. So we don't believe that there should be a building mass concern. With regard to density associated with, associated with the number of individuals or families, under the draft ordinance, there would be no limit on the number of individuals that comprise a family, or rather, it's referred to as a housekeeping unit that was allowed to occupy a dwelling unit or single-family dwelling. Therefore, staff is not of the opinion that the creation of an accessory dwelling unit, which effectively only adds a fully functioning kitchen facility without allowing for additive habitable living area, and at its largest would be the size of a hotel suite, would not likely result in additional individuals occupying the accessory dwelling unit and principal dwelling beyond the number of individuals that could occupy the dwelling solely. A lot of that maybe can be distilled. It's very difficult for us to control the number of occupants of a home, and, and the proposed ordinance doesn't intend to do so based on family relationships either or blood relationships either. So I'm not certain that we could point to a direct correlation between allowing ADUs and potentially seeing an increase in the number of occupants of any particular structure. But it is something that, that I think should be, if, if these are allowed, that we should continue to investigate and research and explore. We have given you a, a table, again, as I indicated before, that references how Dare County, Duck, Kitty Hawk, and Manio treat accessory dwelling units. So hopefully that's informative to the board. And my recommendation, I think, would be that the additional recommended provisions related to maximum unit size, height, location of units on lots, adequacy of septic, utility service, and length of stay be incorporated into the draft UDO to be reviewed by the planning board and eventually considered for action by the Board of Commissioners. And we would welcome feedback related to those items, but also with respect to the location of units on lot, on lots, as well as regarding minimum lot size, parking requirements, allowable locations in the town, and density, if the board has any thoughts or feedback on that. I think it, it would be helpful to understand, does the board intend to seek an ordinance to amend the current zoning ordinance? Or would they be seeking to have these regulations put into the draft UDO to be considered by the planning board and the Board of Commissioners later, I think, to the earlier discussion? I think it would be helpful to understand.
All right. Thank you. If I may, since I've had the advantage of serving on the technical committee, I understand that, you know, that's both a blessing and a curse. I have served for a couple of years on that committee and endeavored to be a good committee member in that context and to roll with the consensus building that, that committee tried to operate with. Now I sit in a position as a board member with, you know, the opportunity to make decisions on this, and I apologize to my committee members if anything that I recommend as a board member or as the mayor is different from the consensus that we built, because I, I think it's incumbent upon me as a committee member and then as a board member to do both and to not try to impose on the committee my thoughts as a board member and to hinder their discussion, and likewise, not to make a decision as a board member that I don't think is in the town's best interest. And so that is a little bit of a difficult position. I also have the advantage of having been involved in two years' worth of discussions, leading, well, four years if you count the comprehensive plan, two years on the UDO, of discussions and having, you know, background that I understand that the full board does not yet have. And understand that I need to be a resource to board members, can be a resource to board members if they have questions. To go further and state, my preference for the action personally, before I poll the board, is that this would become part of the, the UDO. There is on pages one of six and two of six. There is, on pages one of six and two of six, the essential regulations that would be the ordinance in the UDO. And the, the, the other provisions that would affect other sections are recommended here, so that there would be modifications to sections where setbacks are addressed within the ordinance. And then there would be a table showing in which locations ADUs would be permitted. And I, at this point, personally, and, and again, this comes forward as a, as a board member as well, concur with what staff has recommended here, in terms of the core ordinance and the recommendations, and so essentially with, with the director's recommendation at the end, that, that the additional provisions regarding height, et cetera, go into the ordinance. I think the one clarification there is the, the difference between 800 and 600, and I, I concur, I think, with the use of 800, notwithstanding the provisions that were discussed in, in the, in the committee. So, sorry. So with, with that groundwork said, I will ask the board for their comments. Commissioner Sears?
I'd like to hear what the attorney's comments were.
I had a couple of questions that I'll just ask. The first is with respect to the parking. Is there a reason why only one space would be required, or is being proposed as being required?
So the, the one space would be additive over what is currently required for the single-residence district? And normally, the ADU being limited to 800 square feet, the occupancy is going to be no more than two individuals, and I think that's consistent with existing parking regulations in terms of the number of bedrooms.
Well, I guess that's, that's probably what I was thinking of. So would the, let's say the ADU has two bedrooms, would those bedrooms be considered in the count of bedrooms of the primary dwelling, so that the parking would be based on the total number of those bedrooms?
It's not what this says.
Well, I, I didn't see that, but I-
I've got the same question under my list.
Yeah.
Because what this does is gives a reduced parking standard.
That, I think that's correct, if it's, if, and if that's the intent, that's perfectly fine. I was just conceiving of a situation where you could have, if, if it, if it wasn't included in the count for the total bedrooms on, on this particular lot, then you could end up having a two-bedroom ADU, only one space, and end up with not enough parking. That was, that was the concern that I had. Again, I haven't shared any of these with, with staff, but it was just what occurred to me as I read it, and again-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that that was the intent, but I also would say that it's not likely that you would end up with a two-bedroom ADU either, given the, the size restriction. But we can look at that.
Yeah. I was, well, I was, since it's, you know, about 800 square feet, again, I, just in rough terms, I was thinking about it, you could have two 12-by-12 bedrooms, and then still have space for hallways and, and a common area and a bathroom. So, again, I, I was just conceiving of a situation where you might have two bedrooms and might need more than one, one parking space. The, now, this is more of a comment with regard to the septic requirement. I just wanted to say that I, I think that needs, we, we need to study that to make sure that that's a condition that we can impose. My gut is, you probably can, that is probably okay, but I want to, I would want to look at that a little bit further. The only other one is, I, I would caution the board regarding any restrictions regarding the length of stay, only, only because, again, this is similar to the whole short-term rentals discussion, but the, you know, the, the concern that you would have there is that there's no clear statutory authority to regulate the rental of units based on the length of stay, and so we don't have anything there. Now, the way you've adopted the short-term rental ordinance was based, you've used a police-power approach, reg, you know, imposing a registration requirement, and to the extent there are any restrictions, they are motivated by, or supported by, concerns regarding public safety. I think you all mentioned that as, as you discussed it. And again, I think any, any similar types of restrictions here would need to be tied to the same kind of thing. So that's, again, just a, just a comment and a concern. But those are the primary things that I had in, in looking at it over.
Thank you. Mr. Sears?
Yeah. I think that the septic, the lot coverage is going to regulate the majority of this, and I was going to ask for a higher, longer length of time to have more workforce housing, if that was the need, or nurses that would be there long-term. And would like to see the owner be living on the property in that situation, instead of having a house that you could rent out two sections of. But I, I really think, to Mike's point, one bedroom, you're going to be lucky on most of these properties to even have the septic and the lot coverage to have one bedroom added.
Yeah.
Thank you. Herr Lord?
I was concerned where it talked about the size of the dwelling at 50%, and then when you go down, you talk about density. Once again, you talk about would not likely result in additional individuals requiring occupying the ADU, and principal dwelling beyond the number of individuals that could occupy. This whole concept has been presented as either in-law suites, or nursing suites, or whatever, so the implication by the board, through its discussion, has been for additional occupancy, not for non-additional occupancy. So I think it does have the effect of adding, I have concerns about the parking. I still don't believe it fits in every zoning district. We seem to have a lot of groundwater problems, and we are spending an awful lot of money on stormwater, and I think any more impervious coverage only adds to that, and I'm not hearing any solutions that would relate to that. I understand the need for in-law suites, workforce housing, but I'm not sure that every single residential neighborhood that we have needs an ADU section. Maybe that's arbitrary and capricious, maybe it's already existing, but I'm just not certain that we've met all our issues with this. I think I touched on the parking. We talked on the lot size, 16,000 versus over/under, how it relates to that. Let's see. It's hard to go back through and see exactly where all the comments were, but... I think that one thing that I see in here is that, based on board conversation, they are calling for more density. That's what the board has said in, in the previous conversations, so that needs to be changed. The, based on the North Carolina Vacation Act, short-term rentals are 90 days or less, if we're intending for this to be something else. And I'm not saying that I'm going to vote for whatever, because I have a lot of issues that Senate ordinance would have helped me be better prepared for, to be specific. I don't think 30 days is the right number. We need, if you, if the board has something in mind as to what they want it to be, then short-term rental is not part of this equation. And I'm like, Mike, this should not be an opportunity to just add more rental units. It's supposed to meet specific needs, and I don't see that necessarily addressed right And then the rest of it I'll have to address, once I see something, an ordinance, because that's not, it's hard to be specific with this.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not there yet.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
This is a, we had a board retreat in January, and this was a big topic of discussion on our second day. It was part of our agenda. We had a lengthy discussion with, an agreement that we would discuss it in the future, so, so we are discussing it. I think it's important that we have an open and transparent discussion about this. Accessory dwelling units, in my mind, are not for, like, I don't think it's up to us to determine, your mother can live there, your father can live there, or your brother can live there, because we don't do that in anyone's home now. I don't think we have the legal authority to do that. We do know that the state has allowed granny pods throughout the state. Nothing you can do about it. Somebody wants to build one, they can build the granny pod. And then, when Granny passes, you're supposed to remove the granny pod. How you do that and meet building code is kind of beyond me. I think that this has obviously been a discussion, it's been a discussion throughout the country, as property values rise, as needs arise, as workforce housing arises, as elderly aging parents arise, as children returning home arise, or, or, you know, there are all kinds of situations. Obviously, other communities in our area have been able to have this discussion and make decisions that they feel is best, and those are Manio, Kitty Hawk, Duck, and Dare County. I think we're capable of doing the same thing. To say that, you know, I don't want somebody to have an accessory dwelling because two more people are going to live there, well, if somebody owns a lot, and their house is 2,000 square feet, or 2,500 square feet, but they can go up to 3,500 square feet, based on their lot size, they could have an addition of bedrooms, and we cannot limit the number of bedrooms. They can add that on to their house, and there's not a thing one we can do about it, as long as they meet the building code and apply for the appropriate permits. I don't see this personally as being any different. If you want those bedrooms attached to your house, fine. If you prefer to have them in a separate building, I don't see where it's up, up to us to decide what is best for the property owner in that situation, as long as they can meet all the requirements, as long as they have appropriate septic and appropriate parking, and they are not exceeding what they're allowed to do on their lot now, I personally do not see any difference. We don't go around and say, no, you've got somebody living there, I don't want them living there, they're not related to you, because we used to say, you had to be in one family to live in a house. Well, who can regulate family? Times are very different. We have talked about workforce housing here, we've talked about affordable housing here, here. It's a constant theme on the Outer Banks. So this is one way that we can address that. We can address the needs of aging parents, we can address the needs of children needing to come home, we can address the needs of people needing additional income for their ability to remain in their home, while also addressing affordable housing and workforce housing. If we, if we can legally put a limit on the time there, it doesn't matter to me if it's 30 days or 90 days. Workforce housing is going to be 90 days. I just feel that it's important for us to move, move forward, and this was brought up in the comp plan three years ago. The technical committee has already addressed it, staff has addressed it, albeit not in final ordinance form. We have all the basics we need here to move forward and have them draft and ordinance, and I believe that would be the appropriate steps for us, and then have that included in our Unified Development Ordinance. So I'm supportive of this in concept, as long as you meet the requirements, you could add on to your home, or you could build a separate building. You know, it's already happening. To think that it isn't would be a mistake on our part. We had, many, many years ago, there's also ordinances where you can enclose under your house, rent to separate families, that's been going on for 25 years here. We've done nothing to regulate that. We are in a tourist destination, and the housing prices are getting rather high. If we do not want workforce, and we do not want to accommodate the needs of our citizens, then I don't think we should do this. But I think this accommodates the needs of our citizens as long as the requirements are met, and they can add on to their house, or they can do an accessory dwelling, it makes no difference, as long as they have appropriate septic and parking and those things, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fuller?
Again, as I said, first of all, I didn't come ready to discuss it in this manner. I would say, second, that I think this is a discussion for the planning board, with planning staff, and at a, it's in a more informal setting, if you will, and that's where these discussions should be taking place. I don't like trying to give the planning board direction on what we want, but that's the position that we put ourselves in today. So I'm going to have to do the same thing everybody else does, although I don't want to do that. With that being said, the first question I have is, what are we trying to accomplish? Nobody's told me what we're trying to accomplish. So I'd like that question answered first. Then, when we get past that, I will try to address the specifics, as I see it, and then talk maybe about unintended consequences. Okay? First thing you talked about was lot size. My position is that no accessory dwelling unit should be allowed if the lot doesn't meet the minimum lot size of the zoning district. Number two, size. I can't give you an answer, because I would say the answer to size would be, are we trying to have affordable housing, or develop some sort of bed and breakfast opportunities? And I know we talk about limits on time, and this, that, the other, but I still think that you're going to find that that size, but here again, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish, so I can't really say that. Setbacks, as far as I'm concerned, no reduced setbacks, period. Parking, our counselor brought this up, and not only can you do a two-bedroom, you can do a three-bedroom. And so I think the parking standard should be the N minus for the entire amount of bedrooms on site, not one for a affordable housing, or, excuse me, for an accessory dwelling. Locations, I think we've discussed locations at least three times where we've put that to bed already, which was No West Side, which was The Village, SPD 80, SPD 20, and R1, correct? Are those the ones?
R2.
R2. So I thought we've already put that to bed a number of times. If that's back up, somebody let me know. If not, I don't know. Density, and maybe it's a rhetorical question, but you can answer it. If we have 115,000 square-foot lots in town, how many homes can you put on that 100 lots? I mean, 115,000 square-foot lots, how many homes can you put on that 100 lots?
100.
Okay? If we have accessory dwelling units, how many homes can you put on that 100 lots?
My response would be 100, but I think the, maybe the more technical response is, you could have potentially 200 households.
Exactly.
Correct.
So what you've effectively done is, from a conceptual standpoint, you've either reduced your lot size by one-half, or you've increased your density of housing by 100%. Now, if we're not trying to increase the- Now, if we're not trying to increase the number of people or increase occupancy, then why would we be putting an additional house on a lot? That one really stomps me. I mean, we, we're not, if we're not, if we're not trying to increase density, why are we trying to add housing? Makes no sense. Undetermined consequences, just one thing off the top of my head, illegal duplexes. Illegal duplexes, now, a number of them will not become illegal duplexes anymore, they'll become illegal accessory dwelling units with a lot more issues. And how do we, rhetorical question again, how do we plan on addressing all those? Because once we know that they've got all these other issues, what are we going to do? That's quickly where I am, I mean, I'd much rather have seen an ordinance to be able to talk about specifics, but that's just sort of where I was in the last five minutes.
Let me, because we need to, we do need to move this forward, and we have talked about it several times. We, we have, through this process, talked about issues where we wanted to give guidance so we, so that we wouldn't get something that was completely anathema to the board when we got it. If we don't offer some guidance, we're going to get a complete UDO that, you know, it's not clear to me how we're going to address then provisions that, are we, are we going to go through the UDO and piece by piece decide on adoption as opposed to adopting the full document? So, what, what seems to me that we, we need to do, and in terms of what we were trying to do, what I thought we were trying to do with a draft ordinance, or with a draft ordinance with recommendations, or with recommendations, was to get to the point where the board could discuss all of the issues that all of you have raised, either by a show of hands or in some other manner, decide what we want to do on which districts they're in, what size they are, which set of setbacks, make those decisions, feed those into the process. Now, seems to me to be more constructive than to, you know, let it go forward with all of these questions, and then have a full UDO that we're trying to adopt where there may be other issues, there, there may be other items in there that distract us, and then we're going to spend the time that we could spend in advance of seeing the UFO resolving those questions. And so, I guess what we, we've discussed it several times, and until we come to a point where we say we have to have a show of hands, what, what are we going to put in the ordinance on setbacks and size and districts and that sort of thing? How do we do that? And do we want to do that in another meeting here? Do we want to do that in a workshop? How do we do that? Excuse me, Mike.
Yes, sir. I was going to maybe suggest we could consider a, a separate ordinance to amend the UDO for ADUs and consider those parallel, so that the UDO can be considered without ADUs being addressed, and then, if adopted, when adopted, that a separate ordinance be considered for ADUs.
Yeah, I mean, that's just another punt the can down the road, and, and I want to, I want to stop doing that. That's where I'm trying to get to, is to, is to stop punting issues down the road and get them addressed in such a way that we can adopt the whole ordinance. And that's what we've been saying we really wanted to do, is we really wanted to adopt a whole ordinance.
Is that the board value? Is that the board value?
To adopt a whole ordinance?
Quickly.
Two years is, I wouldn't call quickly.
Well, I mean, there, there have been expressions and, and I, back into last year from this board, that we want to see it by the end of the year, and then, you know, it's, it's taken longer, because it takes staff time to do this feedback. But my sense has been that the board's been agitating to get this in front of them for at least a year. Am I wrong about that?
My value is to make sure it's right first and then do it, not try to rush something that might not be right. That's where I'm coming from.
Well, I don't, I don't want to do it wrong either, but I also don't, it's, it's, it's time. My sense is kind of that it's time. So, any feedback on what I said? Renee?
Mayor, it appears to me that one of the strongest questions is location. And I think that's something the board's going to have to decide first. Are ADUs wanted by the majority of the board in every zoning district or in certain zoning districts? And I raise the question based on Webb's or Commissioner Fuller's comments about, we had discussed, and I think it came, if I'm not mistaken, from the original focus about location, because I think that was a discussion in that group setting of the people that worked on that. So, I think that needs to be first and foremost a question, because that's going to be a driving force for what happens from that, that point.
Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
Um, we've been talking about this for a while, and we had a meeting last June 6th where you expressed concerns about the allowance of accessory structures. I wanted to go ahead and discuss it while the committee was working, because development continues to occur. I'd like to see staff move forward and bring back items for us to consider and debate. Commissioner Cahoon felt like the committee had already done their work, and it was time for staff and the planning board to discuss, and this is in discussion of the entire document. Mayor Cahoon said he'd like to consider fully developed ordinances as soon as made available and brought to the planning board through the regular process. And then, it was our board consensus to go ahead and move forward with sections 1 through 8 of the unified development ordinance. We had a workshop on July 5th where you brought up ADUs. I think there is some, based on our retreat, some disagreement about the word consensus to eliminate allowing them, because at our board retreat, that was certainly not the case by the majority of the board. So, this is not a new topic. We, like I said, we had a lengthy debate in January, and I think in, I think transparency is important in a setting like a retreat, you know, the whole public doesn't get to hear our opinions and what we think. And the same is true of a workshop, and we don't vote in workshops. We don't. Those, those decisions are made in board meetings. And I believe we have a long history of providing guidance to the planning board on, in multitude of things. We ask them to look, look at things, and it goes to them, and it comes back to us, and, and that's, that's part of the process. So, I'd like to continue in that vein, I'd like to continue this discussion. I know you said you're not prepared, but you certainly have comments, and, and this is not a new topic for any of us. So, I'm prepared to ask staff to bring back an actual ordinance and see what items we like and what we don't, because we're just, we're just kicking the can down the road, and I don't know why the rest of the county has been able to handle this discussion, except for us. Kitty Hawk, I mean, Killable Hills has not addressed this yet, but I, I think we, I think we can handle the discussion publicly and, and move on, one way or the other.
Should the ordinance come to us or go through the process of the planning board? I mean, I think our process is for ordinances to not come to us unless they've been through the planning board, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it can't, by law, it's got to go to the planning board first.
Well, and I think, if, my apologies, I'm catching up on semantics here, but if we were to put forward an ordinance at this point, would we be putting forward an ordinance to amend the current zoning by, zoning ordinance, which I assume would not be the case? Or we would be, we'd be putting forward an ordinance to amend the yet adopted UDO? I think that's what I'm struggling with is, I, I, what I hear, what I'm reacting to, what I hear is that the commission would like us to put forward regulations that are in an ordinance format, that you would typically, typically see as an amendment, that presumably, for your comment, for your feedback, that we would presumably address in the draft UDO to come to the planning board and then the commissioners later.
Just one clarification.
Yes, sir.
I did not say that.
I understand. Yes, sir.
I didn't know the other board said it or not. I heard one commissioner say it, I did not hear the commissioners say it.
And I apologize if I'm putting words in, for my clarification.
He's just asking a question.
Right. And so, the difficulty of bringing forth an ordinance on ADUs outside of the adopted UDO is the format that that takes, because you would be, you know, it's just, it's hard for me to understand how staff would, would, would format that when the document is not complete. How do you format a modification to a document that's not complete? Now, if we want to get this moving forward, and we think that, and a fully drafted ordinance that goes to the planning board for the planning board's debate, and that then comes to this board for adoption, and if that's what we want to do, I, I think the only way to do that, if we want to make that decision today, is to have them do that as a modification of the current ordinance, take it to the planning board in the form of a modification of the current ordinance, bring that to us, and we either act on it, or, and, and act on it formally, or we say, I think we would have the potential to say, no, this is what we want, yes, but rather than adopt it as a modification of the current ordinance, put this in the UDO. Is, is that the way that this has to operate, or is there another way that I'm not seeing?
I, I think that's feasible, as I understand it. I believe that process is feasible. I, I would ask whether or not doing it that way, whether the board would want to be discussing it two times essentially, are they going to be, is there a hearing that discusses ADUs on the ADU ordinance that may be separate? And then, once again, if the UDO comes back, is that issue also going to be discussed? And it's fair, I think, in either case, but I think, I think it's helpful to the process to understand that.
Well, for, before I let Commissioner Walters speak, I mean, it seems to me that, as many times as we've discussed it, that the way for us to make the decisions is to have an actionable item. And then, we will debate it at that point, certainly, because we will see all the, everybody will have it, everybody will see all the provisions, and we will debate it vigorously, and we will either adopt it or say that's what we want in the UDO. It sounds like we're ready to hear it. I know I'm ready to hear what the, what the final recommendation is, and I don't see any other way to do it as, and, I just don't see any other way to do it. I don't see any other way to force us into the decisions that we need to take.
So, maybe one last consideration is timeline. So, if this were to go before the planning board, presumably then in May, likely wouldn't then come before you until June, if not July, which I think we would hypothetically have the UDO before you prior to July, and, and so things may get out of sequence there.
Okay, all right.
Exactly right.
Okay. Commissioner Walters?
Well, we, we've already done this, and you haven't been here, but we've done this on cottage courts, we've done this on some commercial structures, we've already amended the current ordinance, which goes into the UDO. I don't see this as any different. Is there any reason this can't be on the April planning board agenda? Because you've really pretty much done the work.
Potentially. And come before you in May, potentially. I think then, does the board need to consent to, I'm asking the question, does the board need to consent to open a public hearing in May for ADU, for an ADU ordinance?
I guess, my question is, what's one month difference made in the overall scheme of things?
Well, it's just moving forward. We are, we are stuck.
I know, I mean, a month. I mean, everybody keeps talking about two, two and a half years. All I'm talking about is a month. And my point is, I'd much rather make sure everything's done right. Right now, we've got, and, and I'm getting into what I want to talk about later, so I'd rather not do that now. But I'm much more linear thinker and much more linear in my process, and I get real confused when we're trying to do about three or four things that are going to impact each up, and could potentially cause some difficulties as we progress. And I'd rather just take a very linear approach, let the planning board do its job, present it to us, make it just very simple. And I don't see why we should rush it to get it in May or June.
And when, when you say let the planning board do its work and present it to us, are you speaking of a separate ordinance, or let them finish drafting the UDO section with these provisions?
Just both of those.
Okay.
Is it both at the same time?
See, I don't, I don't think we're giving staff a fair shake at all this. I really don't.
Well, I, I am trying to clarify exactly what it is we want staff to, you know, however we got here, I am trying to clarify, when we leave here today, that there's zero confusion about what we've asked staff to do and what we're going to get back at the May meeting or the June meeting or the July meeting, so.
You can answer my first question, which is, what are we trying to accomplish?
On a macro or, well, I, I am trying to, what?
I'm talking about the ADU. What are we trying to accomplish? What are we just trying to accomplish with it?
Yeah, Andy, would you speak to that? I mean, because it does go back to the comprehensive, part of it originates from the comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan has some general recommendations about housing in the town and providing a diversity of housing accommodations. And I know we were looking at, you know, we've always looked at hotel regulations to provide diversity of accommodations for tourists, at least to have some options to bring people here in the shoulder season. We've talked about having some additional flexibility for multifamily housing, not opening up Pandora's Box for multifamily, but at least allowing some more opportunities for that, and I think that's been considered in the UDO. One of the other provisions was accessory dwelling units as being another way to provide housing options or flexibility in, in how households arrange their housing so they can provide affordable housing or place for their relatives to live, but maybe not under the same roof. I don't think there was any desire expressed during the comprehensive plan to allow ADUs to become additional rentals. So, I think the primary purpose was really to address a housing issue, a housing concern, the way I see it. And so, I think that's something that has been kept in mind by the technical committee as they've worked through this, and I think the last meeting they discussed it, they did, they did look at adding a provision which would restrict the ADU as far as being a rental unit, a short-term rental unit.
And, and if you allow the land use plan to be your guide, your first comment would be that ADU should not be permitted in S- and like R two, because of what it says in the land use plan about density?
It talks, the land use plan talks about, um, the overall development scheme, the scheme of the town, and we, we are generally satisfied with the development, development scheme of the town, and we're not looking to increase density, um, in the, in the comprehensive plan. Um, and so, and I think we, we go on to elaborate, you know, we're not looking to consider ordinance changes in the future if they're brought forward to the board that would increase lot coverage in residential districts or would increase house sizes in residential districts or height, things of that nature. I think that, that framework, the backbone of our development scheme is what the comprehensive plan committee said they wanted to maintain and not expand on that. And so this, this A D U provision, I mean, I guess it can be seen in different ways, you know, and I think what, what's been presented is that it wouldn't increase, you know, the height, the lot coverage, you know, bedrooms, um, overall dwelling size as terms of what you can have on your property, but as far as an expression of the number of dwelling units, the number of people that can be on a lot, but I think that that's where we get into, um, to a little bit of a gray area.
You know, I express it entirely different. I think you're talking about a value, I'm talking about if you allow fifteen thousand square foot lots and you have a hundred of them, how many houses can you put on that lot?
Right, I understand.
And if you allow accessory dwelling units, how many, you, you double your density. I mean, there's no question. Um, and then the question then becomes another is, why would you want to put another house on a lot if you don't expect more people? It just doesn't make sense to me. Um, and then the, if you start referring back to the land use plan and density in those zoning districts, there's no way you could even think about offering accessory dwelling units in those zoning districts. Which is bringing me to another point that I would discuss later, which is the consistency with the land use plan that I haven't brought up yet.
Um, you know, I, I, I think when Michael was mentioning the, uh, not increasing the number of people that it could already be put on the lot, you know, we had talked about the, historically, the zoning ordinance had this definition of family and the family related to housekeeping unit, and it's always said no more than five unrelated persons. And so I think most, most people in the technical committee, and I've, I've heard individual members of the board say this in the past too, that, that, that definition is really no longer realistic.
Not legal.
And so the technical committee has just decided to change that. But what, what we have happening out in, in the community, not necessarily in the neighborhoods you're referring to, but, but townwide, is with rental homes, they're generally based on, you know, two persons per bedroom. So if you had, um, an eight-bedroom home, you've got sixteen people in that home. And so we haven't told, you know, those large homes that they can't have sixteen people in the home. We've just regulated the size of the home and the septic capacity. And so, you know, if somebody has a four-bedroom home and they have a family of four living in the home, and then they have an accessory dwelling unit and they have one or two people in the accessory dwelling unit, you know, they still have less than two people per bedroom. Um, and I think that's what Michael was referring to when he made that statement about, um, not being, necessarily being able to have more people in total. Um, but there's always going to be the circumstance that we may, may not ever be able to control where you've got an A D U that somebody decides to rent to eight people. I mean, there, that's, that's always going to be an issue. But I think the idea is that the A D U provides, you know, the, the ability to have one or two people living under a separate roof on the same property, or maybe even under the same roof, but they have some, somewhat of a, a level of independence, so.
I'll just get back to what Commissioner Kahoon said. She said it, thought it was increased density. I don't see how you can have doubling the number of possible houses not looked at as increasing density of units and density of people. And I, I've never talked about family, I've never talked about number of people in a house.
Right.
But once you double your number of housing units per square foot, the only logical assumption you can make is you've got more housing units and you're going to have more people. I mean, that's the only logical sense. I mean, I know somebody that lives in a four thousand square foot house and has two people in it.
Right.
And they won't have any more than that in there. So I don't know what the point is.
Commissioner Walters.
The, the state took away our ability to regulate the number of bedrooms, which used to be eight. So we can still regulate the size of a home up to five thousand square feet, but they can have twelve bedrooms in there if they can fit them in there and put as many people in there as they want. We just don't have the ability to regulate that. I don't think this ordinance, um, takes away from any of that in that, you know, the maximum size of your, your lot and the maximum sized home you can build on there, it is the only restriction that we can have. And I believe that's covered already in this ordinance. And mind you, this would not apply to the Village of Nagstedt because they have their own separate, uh, set of rules since they're a PUD. Um, I, so having said all that and having this discussion, I'm going to make the same motion as to what I asked for as consensus last month, which was an ordinance. So I'd like to make a motion that we have staff draft an ordinance for consideration at the April planning board meeting for them to discuss and then to return to us for discussion.
Okay. I have, um, motion, is there a second? Can I?
Yes, you may.
Let me confirm this, is the mayor permitted to make seconds?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will second that motion for the purpose of getting this on the table to close the door on this discussion one way or the other.
May I add something too, as part of discussion? As part of an ordinance development for the board to consider for accessory dwelling units, I'd like to see something included, this is my value, not, may not be the board's value, that something be considered that would require an A D U to contain its storm water somehow on site because it's increasing the lot coverage. Yes, it is. It's increasing lot coverage if it's, if it's, if it's a separate dwelling. It's that, my point is, given the amount of storm water which we have, are trying to deal with, that it either be gutted and put into a rain garden or gutted and put into a cistern somehow, that, that, that's my value only, and I'm asking the board to consider that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Walters.
May I ask our attorney, can we require more than is required for the lot coverage in general? Let's say it's a two thousand square foot home, they add an eight hundred square foot A D U, they meet storm water as written, can we require something separate if they haven't exceeded that?
Can I clarify that? So currently under the storm water ordinance, if you add five hundred square feet, which could be an A D U, they would trigger and have to retain for that additional square footage today.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, how does this parallel with the U D O ordinance?
Uh, well, I would like to have a discussion of what that timeline is. Um, I don't know if in the, I don't know if it affects the outcome of this discussion. We have a, a motion that the staff prepare this and take it to the planning board for their April planning board meeting. So the, the discussion about what the schedule would be for the U D O is somewhat separate from that at that, at this point, given what the, given what the motion is, because the motion will trigger, um, a presentation at the April planning board, and it will then come back to this board, and I can't speak to where the U D O will be at that point. I mean, I, I have some idea that's going to be behind it, but.
Okay. Whose values are we going to use in directing the planning board or directing staff on developing this ordinance?
Well, are we, I'm, I'm, I'm confused now because are we going to take the items we've discussed today? I, I, I thought we weren't, that we, what we wanted to do rather than direct them as to what the ordinance was going to be was let the events take their course, let staff draft the ordinance, take it to the planning board, and we will see what we will see.
That's sort of backwards. Staff gets their guidance from this board and the planning board. If they don't have their guidance from us, what we're requesting them to do is provide the planning board an ordinance that will have to be their value unless we tell them the values we want in that ordinance.
That kind of contradicts what you said earlier completely because you said you didn't want to provide anything. I, I will be clear. I'd like for you to take what you've already done, draft an ordinance, give it to the planning board, and let them figure it out, and come back to us with their best recommendation.
Thank you. And that's the motion that has a second.
So you're including the one parking space?
Uh, yes, they can work it out. They've heard, the attorney's going to value, the attorney's going to interject anyway and give his guidance.
Well, I'm also going to interject right now.
Okay.
The, um, the, the, the motion doesn't have any of those kinds of specifics in it. The motion that's before the board is just for them to prepare an ordinance that can be really anything, but I think what the, I'm, I'm knowing staff, they're going to take what y'all have talked about into consideration in how they craft this ordinance. So, um, I, I think you've made it clear what you're expecting to see, which may or may not be what they do because the motion isn't that specific. But again, I mean, if they wanted to get it passed, I would expect they'll try to craft it in a way that's consistent with the comments that they've heard from the board on this conceptual issue.
All right. So comments on the motion that's on the floor or questions? Commissioner Seeger?
No comments about the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Kahoon?
I made my comments, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Walters.
I don't see the sense of urgency. I'd rather take a normal linear course, and so I'm going to be voting against the motion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Having had our discussion then, you've heard the motion, which is, let me be very clear about this, is to, is for the staff to prepare an ordinance for accessory dwelling units for presentation at the April planning board meeting, and that's to this board for action, and that's it. All those in favor signify, I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask my question one more time. Sorry. The direction does not specify, the board's not going to give them any direction as to any zoning districts.
Um, yeah, that, that's not in the motion, so the, but in order for it to be a fully developed ordinance, when it comes back to us, it will have to say in which districts it is proposed to, to operate, and that, that will be our opportunity to either add districts or strike districts.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
The expectation in this ordinance is on your May agenda, that the planning board has the April meeting. Okay.
Yep.
And, and at that May meeting, you'll decide if you want to set a public hearing, which would be on your consent agenda in May and the public hearing in June.
Unless we have a mid-month meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
Point of clarification.
Yes, certainly.
Based on the manager, if it's on our May, mid-May agenda for public hearing, any changes that would be made in May would be part of that public hearing, or would the public hearing only be as it's presented to us in May?
I'm going to look to the attorney.
I'm sorry, can you repeat, repeat that question?
If there's a public hearing in May on the proposed ordinance that is presented to us.
Right.
And we make substantial changes in May, which goes to public hearing? The draft that comes to us that's on the agenda for public hearing or the changed ordinance that we would?
The one that, uh, if there is an ordinance that's proposed to be, to, to, to be the subject of a public hearing, then that will be the one that will need to be the subject of the hearing. And if there are substantive changes after that vote to schedule the public hearing, that would require an additional hearing, if that answers your question. I think, I think that's what you're asking.
That is. I just don't want us to be spinning wheels unless what we put to public hearing is what we want to, the public to comment on. Does that make sense?
It, it, it does, although I think unless we sort of let this bird fly, spinning wheels is what we're, seem to be doing a lot of, and we either spin wheels with an ordinance in front of us or we spin wheels without one in front of us.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that we don't consider the ordinance. That wasn't my suggestion. I just want to make sure what we vote to send a public hearing is what we
Yes.
want the public to consider.
Yes.
So I think that was what the manager was asking.
Okay. All right. Are we all clear?
Just a call for it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Do we need a break?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you talking about a lunch break?
Uh, yes, I guess we are. It's 12:04. Is an hour adequate? Then the board will recess for, uh, an hour and reconvene at about 1:05. Okay, the board will return to order. The next item on our agenda is item H three, consideration of police department office manager job description. Cleo?
Thank you. Um, at your March C I P workshop, we discussed with the board the, um, changes in restructuring in our information technology department, um, with the I T director retiring, um, and a second vacancy in that department. We took an opportunity to look at the town as a whole and consider how we might be able to restructure, um, with the timing. In years past, the office manager in the police department had progressed into a, a different classification, um, into a, a police office systems manager and did more in the I T realm. And what we, and the function started to splinter some to where we were seeing a police I T and then a town I T. We wanted to take this opportunity to go back and, um, try and put, make sure we've got I T all under one umbrella. What we're proposing in the, uh, budget forthcoming is kind of a hybrid approach to I T townwide, and that would be, um, use of a consultant for capital improvement planning and, and software updates and some of the, more of the, um, higher end, I guess, um, progression in I T, and then having a, a, an employee in I T that would kind of serve as a, a liaison between the staff, the board, and that consultant, and making sure we had someone during business hours to make sure everything ran and operated smoothly. As part of that, this opportunity for transition, we wanted to take, um, the, the office systems manager mover into that role for the the Office Systems Manager mover into that role for the, for the progression there. And then what that does is we'd like to ask the board to consider putting the Office Manager in the Police Department back. You've got the job classification in, in front of you. It's in the board packet. That will give us an Office Manager and an Office Assistant in the Police Department. We'd like to be able to go ahead and, and we brought this forward to you now so we can go ahead and start this. So if you have any questions about the job classification, I may need to rely on the Police Chief and Human Resources Director for any questions you may have.
Well, I believe there is a question about the, the grade for this position. So one of the board members who asked that?
Well, I get, I have two questions. Is this an additional position or reclassification of a position?
This is reclassification of a position.
And does that come with a reclassification of the salary grade?
Yes, sir.
And where is, I don't know if I saw that.
The, the, the grade that this reclasses from is a higher grade, so this is, this would be a reduction in grade and salary.
Did we get that?
No, sir.
So what grade is it now and where are you proposing to take it?
It's going to be going to a grade seven, which is consistent with our other two office managers that we have, and it's currently a grade nine.
Makes sense.
Okay.
I just didn't have the salary.
Yeah, that should have been part of, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any questions then for the manager? Mike?
No questions.
Renee?
No.
Susan?
Yes.
Web, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, having seen the proposed job description and clarified the grade, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve as presented with the proposed grade going from nine to seven.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business and that would be committee reports. First, Commissioner Sears?
Nothing to report from my committee.
Commissioner Cahoon?
Yes, the GovEd TV has met. The chair for the upcoming year is the representative from East Carroll, ECU Coastal Studies Institute. That's it for me.
Okay. I'll report on several things. These are sort of, sort of committees and just general mayor activities. First, County Board Chair Woodard and I met with members of Senator Tillis's staff on Friday. We met with Trey Lewis, his Northeast Director, with Kim Kennedy Barnes, his State Director, and with Corey Brown from DC, who's the Legislative and Energy, who's the Legislative Energy and Environment Aid. We had about five hours of their time. We talked to them about offshore oil drilling and testing. We brought them over to look at the beaches, to see the kind of investment that the towns and the counties have made in our beaches and, and we, I think, very effectively presented sort of the business case for no offshore drilling. I have no doubt, based on the, the emotion with which particularly Chairman Woodard presented our thoughts about that, that they left with a full understanding of how we feel and how important this issue is to us and that they will convey that message back to the, the Senator. There was some talk about also the environmental issues. We primarily talked about the impact that a spill would have on our businesses and our lifestyle and as it was expressed in the meeting, those of us in the room were not trying to save the whales. We were trying to save ourselves. And there was some discussion about us working with the Senator's staff to bridge that message into the rest of the state so that everybody gets on board with us and, and understands the issue from their point of view. So I expect that there will be some follow up to that discussion. We, I have been working with Secretary Michael Regan from DEQ and we have set up a Mayor's Roundtable that will be May the 8th. It will be here somewhere. We're still working on the exact location and the Secretary's Office is drafting the, the invitation, but this will be all of the mayors from all of the Kama counties and where there is not an incorporated town in a Kama County, the Chair of the Board of Commissioners will be invited to that. I believe there are about 54 people on that invite list. And we will bring them here and probably meet shortly after lunchtime. And part of the effort, this is leading up to the Boham Open House that's coming up in April and is an attempt to, in part, to get our fellow mayors to be more vocal on this issue and to try to, try to press our case against offshore drilling and testing. We've had a meeting, the local mayors are meeting to discuss stormwater and coordination with DOT on stormwater issues. Our next meeting will be April the 12th with representatives of DOT. Our local board member as well as the district engineer will be there. We will talk about coordination and cost sharing where there are projects in the DOT right of ways. And I will, am planning to take our, in particular, our South Nagseth projects with what we would like to do there and how we would like for them to participate as we had discussed in our CIP workshop to, for, on all of our parts to try to get more assistance from DOT in the drainage projects that we're all struggling with.
May I make a point real quick?
Yes, sir.
DOT consistently says it's their job to get the water off their road and that's where their responsibility rests. There are a number of cases now where they're not, where they're not doing their maintenance. It's impacting us. It's not just their water going off in their ditch, but their ditch water is coming off on the citizen's property.
Yes.
And I can't overemphasize the fact that the lack of their maintenance is causing us issues.
Yes, and that was, that was one of the big topics at the last meeting that we had. All, all of the towns like us have some degree of maintenance issues with ditches or culverts or another that are causing backups of stormwater in those communities that rely, in part, some that rely on the infrastructure. You know, even where they might manage to drain the water, there was an example given in Killable Hills where they managed to drain the water off their road, but they are not maintaining the culvert under the road and therefore the water can't move from one side to the other to, to follow its normal drainage route. And that's, that's their maintenance that's hindering that. So, and the last item is that you've seen some of the emails. There are a number of legislative issues being discussed in Raleigh that would have an impact on our local regulations and ability to control certain issues, tree cutting, wastewater, any number of other issues. And so I have spoken with the manager and I talked with Representative Hannig yesterday about us taking a trip to Raleigh to make our points on any legislative issues that are hanging out there that might have a negative impact on, on the town. Representative Hannig asked just that we give him a couple of weeks' notice so that he would have adequate time for us. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, in response to that, may I throw it to the board that we authorize the mayor to write members of the legislature, especially to our representatives, expressing our values about some of these issues that negatively impact us? Does that, does the board object to that? Mayor going ahead and?
No objection.
Moving that forward.
Okay, all right. Hearing, no objection, we will, we will do exactly that. Thank you. That's all I have to report. Mr. Walters? Commissioner Fuller?
Tourist Bureau, just briefly, each month I leave the Tourist Bureau package over here if anybody wants to see it. Also, there is a summary of the Tourist Bureau done by the Executive Director on government TV, so if anybody wants to see it. I do request that y'all follow the Tourist Bureau and see what it's doing. As you know, it, as of at least late yesterday afternoon, it appears that the Tourist Bureau will close on the quote Dairy Queen site probably Thursday. Unless something comes up that's a surprise. Closing is not necessarily a total closing, but it looks like the closing is on, going to be on a Thursday where we would assume ownership. The rest of anything is being discussed about stuff. It's probably closed session stuff except for the fact that the Tourist Bureau has acquired another consulting firm, company to look at what to do with the property. And so far, I know they've met once. I'm not really much privy to that detailed discussion.
Thank you. Cliff, you had mentioned that they were trying to schedule a meeting to come talk to you.
They did.
They did, okay.
Yeah, they've met, they've been, they're from Chicago, I believe. They've come and they met just to try and get an idea of the, the zoning and, you know, what's permitted and the sentiment of the town towards the development of that property.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, board members? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda, item I2, is consideration of board committee appointments. This is an appointment to the Dare County Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board. I believe it's former Commissioner Ratzenberger who serves on that board. So a volunteer or a recommendation, a nomination, sorry, a nomination would be in order.
I would recommend Commissioner Sears.
Okay.
A volunteer.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we probably need to make that official, so.
That a motion.
Okay, that a motion, right. A motion, we have a motion, we have a volunteer, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mike, very much. I hope you never have to meet. The next item on our agenda would be items from the town attorney. Mr. Whitey?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present today.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next item, items referred to and presentations from the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start with the Planning Director, Michael Zander, is going to give just an update to the board on our permitting software and how that's working thus far.
So thank you, giving you just four short slides indicating at least a report of the last three months for the third quarter of FY 1819. So what are the tasks that we've completed, things that we've instituted? I think the board is aware of MUNIS has been effective with the first permit issued January 3rd, 2019. Event notifications are active for inspections, so whenever an inspection is performed, as long as we have the email contact information for the applicant in the system, they do receive a notification email indicating that that inspection has been completed. For residential projects, we've started accepting Kama Minor applications for review along with a building permit application. They both obviously are reviewed separately or independently, but we've perhaps streamlined that process a little bit. Formerly, the Kama Minor permit application was a prerequisite review and issuance prior to an applicant being able to submit for a building permit application. And then we've started a bi-weekly permit tracking update and that's kind of what the grid is, the table is on the right-hand side. Every Monday, our staff sends to the department staff a table that looks like this where the red permits are ones that require greater priority because they've been in the system longer than the yellow and the green. And then on Thursday, staff provides an update in terms of where these permits stand, in terms of their review. Hopefully, by that time, at least some of the items in the red, if not entire, all of those have been cleared or at least we have a better understanding of what information we may need from the applicant at that time. So things that are in progress or pending, we want to continue to work to improve our use of MUNIS, the reporting of it, the forms that we use that are generated from MUNIS, updating of current owner information. So when property is transferred, we want to make sure that the owner information is being updated in our system. And then continuing to look at improvements to our ordinances, namely the residential stormwater ordinance, whether that's working for the town and the community and users of that ordinance. So next steps moving forward, and these are maybe in no particular order, we want to begin documenting outlining our current permitting workflows. What are all of the types of permits that we issue? What are the workflows for that? Where are things, where are opportunities to improve on those processes and do things maybe in a more efficient manner? We want to think about creating a separate review process, separate workflow for less complicated permits so they're not commingled with, or that every permit type is not commingled and that it's the project, the project that's reviewed first or next is the one that came in first or next. We think that things like siding changes and roof renovations and things like that may be able to have a separate process and may be able to be a focus of our plan reviewers. Identify effects of the UDO on our processes and permits. We hope that there's not broad effects, but we know that there is a sketch plan review process as part of site plan review. We also want to make sure that we have workshops on the UDO and in general on our permitting processes with organizations such as the home builders and other stakeholders in the community. And then we want to roll out citizen self-service. This would be the online ability to make permit applications, but also schedule inspections. I expect first that we'll look at doing that only for trade permits. There's some hiccups between the system and some of the data and information that we need as part of the permitting process that could complicate, if we were to roll it out for every type of permit, I think could complicate things. So for this, we anticipate putting a kiosk at the Planning Department front desk, at least for a short period of time, to only allow applicants to make an application through that. So we can get acclimated with how that will function on our end, but also begin to have applicants that may be making trade permits to have them test the system out and see if it works for them. But I would say in terms of the inspection scheduling, our inspectors have been very receptive to the MUNIS platform and we expect to be able to have that rolled out, I would say by the end of this month, I imagine. So the last slide gives you a good overview of our activity. The line on the top, this is by week for the third quarter. The line on the top is going to tell you the number of permits that have, that were applied for in that particular week. And then the line on the bottom, going downhill is a positive thing, is the turnaround time and the number of business days for permits that were received in that particular week. So as you can see, there's really no correlation between the So, as you can see, there's really no correlation between the number of permits and our turnaround times. I would say, you know, in any given week, we could receive a permit that's more complex than another week, so it's not necessarily related to volume. But I think initially, and this doesn't provide you a picture of what occurred prior to January, but at least the early stages of this, you could imagine that was the transition period for staff with Munis. So, some of the turnaround times perhaps were more lengthy than we would hope and expect. But during the quarter, and this is not every type of permit, so this would not include trade permits, but this would include demolitions, renovations, additions, new structures, things of that nature. But 191 permit applications were submitted over that period, and our average turnaround time was 8.89 days for review.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I have a few questions before we, before I ask the board members. Back to the chart with the red bars at the top, so I'm not gonna ask you to pull that up from the website, but can you tell us what the, what the columns are? I see dates, we can't read it. So, I see dates in the first couple of columns, and it looks like a project title, maybe?
Yeah, so, you can just leave it, right? That's fine. So, the first two columns are gonna be related to the, to the parcel ID and to the, to the application number, and then application address, project type, and then the last few columns are related to when the application was made, what the current date is, how many days of review. So, if it's red, it's going beyond 10 business days of review. If it's in the green, it's gonna be still within five business days, so, and the yellow is between, you know, six and 10 business days.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you get even, I don't know that we need to see it, but I'm curious, do you, also on like the last chart, can you see the breakdown and the trend by the different permit types?
We should be able to produce that.
Okay, I don't need to see it, but I assume it would be useful in tracking, you know, the rate, the number, and then the rate of more complex versus the simplest ones.
Yeah, and some of that is related to, you know, getting familiar with the reporting functions in Munis as well, and making sure that we're able to generate reports that lead to data such as this, but I believe we can separate it out that way. Yes, sir.
My last question is, what's your success in, and you don't have to give me numbers, but in general, your success in clearing on Thursday items that may be lingering up in the red?
So, I can tell you that I believe this example I pulled, this was a Monday, and I think the email that was sent on Thursday said, "Great job, we've cleared seven of these, including the two in red, but now, some that were in green have proceeded to be in yellow." So, you know, it highlights, I think, the priority for people, but I think it, it's done a good job in terms of making people aware of what projects are the priorities, which permits are the priorities.
All right, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Board members, Commissioner Sears?
Do you find one tip, typical application causing the reds more often than not?
You know, just anecdotally, I think, if we're talking about new structures, entirely commercial or residential, I think it's something we need to make sure that we're focused on in terms of our review time of those. It's just jumped out at me as something that perhaps takes more time because of the various regulations, whether it's going through stormwater and CAMA and whether there are flood zone requirements affecting it. I think staff wants to be diligent, make sure they don't miss anything, and we just need to make sure that they're able to be as efficient as possible on those. But those, I think generally just, to me, they seem to have jumped out in terms of taking longer, which I think makes sense.
More eyes on it. Good.
Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Fuller?
Just wanna ask you, are you comfortable that we can get from when somebody submits a completed plan to an issue of a permit down, and that the system is working and you don't see any issues with the software?
No, actually, so, the community I was in previously, we had Munis, so I'm familiar with it. We had an earlier version of it, and so this is, but it's very much similar, so I'm familiar with it. I think staff is really picking it up very well. They've, you know, had experience with it since January. I think, you know, Tyler Munis support is there if we need it. I think, you know, I think where we are in terms of the turnaround time, being at an average of 8.89 days, you know, being within, you know, eight, five, six days of turnaround, I think is a good way, a good place to be. You know, we want to make sure that there's certainly outliers and that we're, you know, reducing the turnaround time on some of those difficult, more difficult projects, I think. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is report on the 2019 Beach Nurishment Project.
Yes, sir, thank you. Things are starting to pick up a little bit now. The, March 14th, we had a pre-construction meeting with the regulatory agencies. In attendance were several staff from Great Lakes, we had a couple from the Army Corps, CAMA, of course, North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission, and US Fish and Wildlife were there, and this is their opportunity to go through and discuss each condition that's on the permit, and we got through that. The latest that we're getting from Great Lakes is that actually, between 1:00 and 2:00 today, we'll be delivering the first front-end loader to Nagshead, and they expect to have many of their staff start to arrive next week. There's two dredges that are gonna work our project. One is the Ellis Island, the other is the Liberty. Ellis Island is expected to arrive, right now, Great Lakes is doing a project down in Emerald Isle, they're gonna leave Emerald Isle to come this way. The Ellis Island is their newest and largest dredge, and it's got a 15,000 cubic yard capacity, which is more than double the capacity of any of the four dredges they had here back in 2011. So, it's gonna obviously be able to work, they anticipate it carrying as much as 14,000 cubic yards. So, that, that will speed our project along, well, once it starts. But right now, that Ellis Island is expected to arrive in Emerald Isle on April the 9th, and it'll stay there till the 18th. It's got a dock for maintenance, but it's scheduled to arrive, and I've scheduled, say that loosely, April the 23rd, the Liberty Island should be here in Nagshead. The Liberty Island is currently in Emerald Isle also, and is expected to arrive in Nagshead around May 7th. The, the, we've scheduled right now, tentatively, a contractor's pre-construction meeting on April the 11th, that'll be at 2:00. In the beginning, we'll have weekly updates, weekly construction meetings that could, as we progress, go into two weeks, once every two weeks, but initially, we'll start with once a week. We still have some things that we need to do on the ground. We have to do coastal science, we'll have to do a pre-construction survey, which they're, they're trying to get scheduled, and hopefully, we get a break in the weather and they can get that done. We're in the process of geodynamics of doing the mean high water survey, they actually started last Friday. I'm not certain how far they've gotten, how much of the data they could collect, and at what point they are in analyzing that. We did find out at the March 14th pre-construction meeting that we were not going to, CAMA was not going to require us to reestablish the static line, the static line from 2011, from the 2011 project will remain in place. So, we, we anticipate that, like I said, in the next week, we'll start to see some equipment, we'll start to see some pipes. Great Lakes has a dock up in Norfolk at the shipyard that they have, they've already been staging some of the pipe, it'll make its way, it'll start coming down. Roberta has done an excellent job of doing all that she possibly can to ensure that our residents, renters, visitors, property managers are all aware of where we are in the process and hoping to make, you know, to make sure folks are aware that this is coming. It's too early to, you know, right now, we, we've been advertising May to October is when the window of this project will take place, which is based partly on the contract and partly on the permit. Great Lakes has established high expectations of getting this project done. I mean, obviously, they want to be as efficient and effective as they possibly can. With the Ellis Island being here, I think it will allow them to work at a faster rate than they did in 2011. That remains to be seen, so we need to, it's premature to talk about them finishing any earlier than October, but that's a possibility. Roberta, is there anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Just questions. Feedback from renters, property managers, homeowners?
And Roberta can answer this better than I can, but, you know, the obvious question on everyone's mind is, where will they be when I'm there? And, you know, I'm gonna be there the week of X, where will the construction be? And it's, it's almost impossible to answer that question, but what we can tell people is that we can chart the progress online, we can, you know, try to keep that up to date as much. We know where they are when, we just don't know that far out, so people can watch that. And I think that's the main question folks are wanting to know. We anticipate this project, you know, in 2011, it started at Forest Street and kind of worked in no rhyme or reason out from there. They indicate they're gonna start in the southern part and work their way north. Again, that's what they indicate today, conditions changed, things changed, but that's preliminary what they're telling us. And Roberta, I don't know if there's an overall arching question or sentiment from the people you talked to.
Things are going a lot easier this time than they did in 2011. People are more prepared for the project, they're being, we're trying to get the information out there, and the property management companies have been very helpful and have been getting the information out there, and I've spoken to a few staff at a few different management companies, and I can't thank them enough for their help.
Any questions?
Two things. One is, how are your rebidding processes coming for those items that we had to rebid?
The, the only remaining item to rebid is the sand fencing. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to work with a general contractor on that because the bidding requirements require that whoever gets to bid does so under a general contractor's license. But the rest, the rest, that's the only outstanding contract that we need to get resolved.
And my second question is, are we gonna have on our website a town map showing where they are on, at any given week?
Yes, ma'am.
And it will progress linearly?
Yes, yes. Roberta, in that pre-construction, with, when Great Lakes was here, they can, she can coordinate with Great Lakes to keep this as up-to-date as possible, is, you know, how much progress they're making.
In 2011, we relied on the engineers for the progress updates. I'm working with Dare County, so that we don't have to do that now. And I'll be able, I have a Google map already on the website, and I'll be able to get coordinates directly from Great Lakes every day. I can't promise you I'll be able to do the map every day, but I'll do it a lot more than we did in 2011, and we have control over that progress map.
Good, because that will answer some of the questions that Commissioner Fuller had about, and the manager had about renters and so forth. The more information you can get out there, the better off we are. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cliff. The next item on our agenda is consideration of participation in the Dominion Power Program for lighting.
Yes, thank you. The information that I provided, and I apologize, I wasn't able to get all of this in the packet, the, we talked at the, again, at the workshop, we had an opportunity to retrofit our, some of our existing facilities and existing bulbs and fixtures to LED. Dominion Power has a rebate program that we have to work with someone who's been pre-approved, and there are several contractors that we can work with. But, but what I've put before you is, when we, the deputy manager and finance officer and I have gone through the budget, we recognize that there's some savings in lapse health insurance through the police department, and we felt like we, we had an opportunity, wanted one, to make sure we took advantage of this program before it expired. It, it has expired in Virginia. But we identified some funds that we can go ahead and do this now, through lapse, like I said, lapse, health insurance benefits in the police department through salaries that we've had lapse, and we found lapse salary also in, to cover the water department portion of this. The, the, the impact to the general fund would be $45,652, the impact to the water fund would be $3,697. This retrofits us, this facility, the boardroom, it'll do so for town hall, for the facilities, maintenance shop at Public Works, in Station 21, the Public Works attached garages, as well as the water garage or water facility. So, what I'm asking for is your approval for a budget amendment that would take $45,652 from group health insurance, transfer it to maintenance and repair buildings, take $3,697 from salaries and water, and transfer it, again, to maintenance and repair buildings. This would be an amount of $49,349, not to exceed amount, that if the board authorizes this budget amendment, I'd ask also to be able to enter a contract with the approved electrical contractor not to exceed this amount.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Please don't use the contractor that Jeanette's peers used. You never have the work done by Labor Day.
Good to know.
I mean, for them to have changed so few light bulbs, it's been a month, and they're still not through.
Wow.
I mean, it's...
This is crazy.
I know, I know I'm being snarky, but if we want the work done, don't use the same one.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that enough.
Any other comments or questions on this item? All right, hearing none, then a motion would be in order?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Not to exceed the amount as shown.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, one other thing I just wanted to make sure we got right, the, I'm not sure that when you approved the registration for the short-term rentals, that you also, the consolidated fee schedule shows a $25 registration fee, and the consolidated fee schedule that you approved in your consent agenda was for the farmer's market, and did not include the short-term rentals. So, we've got this included under business license, Roberta's pulled it up on the screen. It was in your packet, but I, I believe we need a separate motion to approve adding this $25 fee to the consolidated fee schedule.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, could I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the addition of the short-term rental registration fee, $25 annually. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Good talk, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Board of Commissioners' agenda, Commissioner Fuller, discussion on the workshop on the Unified Development Ordinance.
And Mayor, I do have two items. One is not listed, but, so if you're gonna just go through this first and get onto the table, I'll be willing to hold off on the second, but if not, I'll just do the second one.
That's fine, no, good.
I guess, I guess the bottom line is, I would just like to request that, once we receive a UDO, that the full board have a workshop on the UDO. That's it in a nutshell. I think a lot of my issues have been discussed today. My concerns are, from the retreat, I think, like you would ask if any... My concerns are, from the retreat, I think, like, you would ask if anybody had any hot button or hot something items that they wanted to discuss, to please list them. I know I listed either two or three. I have not heard anything back from that yet. So at least the items that I brought up at the retreat have not been discussed, to my knowledge. That's one thing. The other thing is, you know, I, when we get the UDO, I wanted to make sure that we all got the same UDO. And that I prefer that we go through a linear process, I've said. But if we're, if we're going to be voting on the UDO, I want to make sure that we're not voting on the UDO, and then a month later, that comes something along that changes the UDO. And I just am very concerned about that. I don't know if I'm making sense about that or not, I can explain it if you want me to, but I probably just confuse it more. And then I think Commissioner Walters mentioned a June 6th board meeting we had. And part of that, we also agreed that before we pursued the UDO, we'd have a workshop with the planning board on the UDO. So I want to make sure that that happens as well. So I'd like for us to have a workshop, and then we've already agreed to have a workshop with the planning board.
Okay. We were not able to get today a firm date for delivery of the UDO.
And that?
Which really drives the rest of the schedule.
And I think we kicked that date further down the road. If you're expecting the UDO after whatever ADU adjustments you made. If a complete UDO, does the complete UDO that we get to you ahead of the workshop include the results of the ADU that was sent to the planning board?
Preferably.
Well, if you're not going to add it after, do any additions after, then...
It needs to be before.
I want to make sure that what we're meeting on is the UDO.
Right.
Not what somebody thinks it's going to be.
Right. I agree. So...
Be June. Before you get it.
Then, I guess the question before us then is not so much about dates at this point. It is to the question of having the workshops.
And I'm not saying the board may, the board may not wish to have a workshop, but I do think we did commit to making sure that we did have a workshop with the planning board.
I think, if I recall, that was, there was a decision made subsequently by the board that there was not a need to do that because the planning board had already seen it and worked on it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we adjusted, that was the schedule, that was the intent. The board decided to forego that joint workshop because you didn't feel like it would produce, the juice was worth the squeeze.
Because they already provide their information to us and their recommendations through the process, so...
I mean, I think that's, that's what I recall as well. We'd originally talked about having a joint workshop with the planning board and the board. Then we presented an alternative schedule, I think in February, to the board, which took the joint workshop with the planning board out in order to move it along, recognizing that the board talked about it at the retreat and that the planning board had been talking about it as well. And we had been presenting all the updates to them, that there wasn't necessarily a need to meet separately with the planning board. I'll just say, the minutes said that, Mayor Coon said he would like to consider fully developing ordinance as soon as has made available and brought to the planning board through their regular process with a workshop between the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. And went on from there. And I haven't seen anything in writing or at a board meeting where we've changed that.
Terms of the minutes. What was the date of that meeting?
At the six, June 6th.
And then we subsequently had a workshop.
In July.
But, I mean, I'm saying we haven't changed what we did at a board meeting. You can't change what you did at a board meeting in a workshop.
We had that workshop in July.
Well, I think what we were, we're talking about is, just this, this February, we presented a schedule to the board, and Holly did it during her normal update. And it basically said, we're proposing to not have the joint workshop with the planning board in order to move the process along, recognizing that the board had talked about it at the retreat and that the planning board had been reviewing it. And so I don't know how the minutes reflected that, but I think we basically said, without any objection, we're going to work towards this schedule. And that, that was at the February meeting. And that had a 5-1 public hearing, May 1st public hearing. And that's what we've been working towards. But obviously, you know, if the board wants to have a separate workshop as a board, and then you also want the ADU ordinance, whatever version that takes, to be a part of that, that changes things.
That was in particular.
Yeah. It's close, Scott, the schedule.
Rather than, it seems to me that two workshops on the board's part are excessive. That we need one good workshop with the final version of the ordinance in hand. And we can't set the date for that today. So I guess what, the only thing that I would ask in regard to Commissioner Fuller's request and comments is, is it the board's consensus that we have a workshop, a board workshop, Board of Commissioners workshop, with the completed UDO prior to the meeting that we, where we would adopt the UDO? Okay, I see two heads nodding this side. See one nodding this side.
Repeat what you said, I'm sorry.
That the, the board would have a Board of Commissioners workshop with the completed UDO before we have our meeting where we would adopt the UDO.
And we still have, is the public hearing scheduled for May 1st? Tentatively, no. Because we're going to hear this on, the planning board's going to hear this in April.
You know, I'm, I'm reacting here and just thinking, so if, if we're taking ADUs to the planning board at their next meeting, it does not make sense, if that is to be incorporated into the UDO, perhaps does not make sense to know what the action is on the ADUs until the Board of Commissioners acts on the ADUs.
Which would be in early May.
Which would be in, in May. So what we could do is have the UDO considered by the planning board in May instead of April. That would be subsequent to your May 1st meeting, at which time you will presumably taken some action on the ADUs. So that then you could possibly have a workshop in late May or early June, before your June public hearing.
Well, we wouldn't be able to have the public hearing that the first meeting changed
Right.
by that schedule.
Do we, we already have a Board of Commissioners workshop scheduled, budget workshop scheduled for mid-May, May 15th at nine o'clock. Can we just combine all of that at the same time, or no? It's not going to work?
The, the planning board
When do they meet?
Would not have had the UDO before the 15th.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
Well, I just know that as we get closer to summer, it's going to be more and more difficult for people to meet. It's going to be more and more difficult for public hearings for, if you want community participation.
Okay. So it seems to me that what we would need to do with, again, not knowing a critical date, is that we would, on May the 1st, set a workshop. I don't think, I mean, we can't do it today. We don't know, we don't know the completion date of the UDO at this point. Is that satisfactory to the board?
I guess the only follow-up to that, at least for me, is I've, I've left some questions out there that I don't think have been answered. Am I supposed to go try to meet with staff to get those questions answered or addressed? Or am I supposed to bring them up at that workshop?
I, I would endeavor to get as many questions answered as early as possible.
Thank you.
Has the technical committee finished all of their work at this point?
I believe we have.
So your questions, since they weren't submitted previously, will not go before the technical committee?
No.
Their input?
No, we're not.
I mean, the questions were asked before the technical committee met.
We all submitted our questions in writing.
Mine were at the work, mine were at the retreat.
In writing for the technical committee?
They're in the minutes, they're in the minutes of the retreat.
Let's pull those minutes and decide as the, as the committee...
I would think they're in the minutes of the, they are.
I've got them right here.
Okay, so let's, let's have staff and the committee resolve whether we need to meet to act on those items. And at what date we can do that.
Yes, sir.
So as not to let this go further.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're all listed, I...
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else?
Mayor?
Yes.
Would like to bring up something about the budget, if I may?
Yes, certainly.
In, in terms of this year's budget, like to do, ask two things. One, we were operating, my understanding last year was from a second year of a two-year budget process. And as a new board member, the first thing is, I didn't appreciate the fact that somebody that was before me was setting the budget that I'm responsible for. And I would like to think and would request that we at least have a one-year budget process this year. And if we have two-year budget processes in the future, they coordinate with the elections so that when people get elected, they can operate freely and work from their first year without being held to a standard that the last board did. That's just the very first thing. The second thing is, and I've been trying to think about this, I think it comes back to some things that Cliff's been asking, but to me, we've been given a lot of budget information in a micro sense, but we haven't been given, given a lot of budget information in a macro sense. And for me to give Cliff the guidance that I think he's requesting of me, what I'd like to do is have staff develop a proposed revenue chart that goes out five years, 10 years, 15 years, based on certain scenarios of their choosing that they would know what they are. And a expenditure chart that goes out five, 10, 15 years. So we can see where, based on what they have, that there is a, you know, I mean, it could be that they're all the same, and there's no gap. And that would give me a lot more guidance. But if I start seeing expenditures going out at like 20% and revenue going out at 2%, then I'm going to have some hard questions today. And with that said, I'd also like to see, starting with today, whatever that means, today, going backwards, how we have, you know, the tax rate has gone along to, to today. But I guess the question, it's very easy to look at a CIP and say what you want if you don't know what it's costing you. And I think that's what we're looking at with the budget. He's saying, what do y'all want, what do you want? Well, give me, give me some parameters. Just show me what the revenue projections are, the expenditure projections are, and then I can give you some guidance. So I'd like to see if we could get those for us to look at before we go into our next budget workshop.
I see head nodding at that.
Yeah, the revenue and expenditures projected out, the, the, or were you looking for the, what the tax rate has been historically, the town tax rate?
Yeah, that, yeah, just what we've done up and down, or just...
Good. Yep, but the, the, what we were, the plan with the two-year budget was to present a budget for FY '20 for you to adopt, and then the '21 would be just a projected plan. And not, not that would bind a subsequent board, but it was just, look planned out a little bit further.
It's, it's more efficient in some ways for staff to think about multi-year requests, even if they make a hard ask in a given year. Again, it's, it's forward planning to have some idea of where you're going to be at least the next year. And I understand that some department heads would have difficulty projecting in detail as they're required to do, much beyond that.
I'm not necessarily having a problem with two-year budgeting per se, but I think it should be coordinated with the board changes.
Yes, yes.
It, it is just a financial plan. It's, the county does it, I believe other municipalities do it. It is, it's, it's your budget, and it's your plan for the following year, which does help staff look forward and get a plan regardless of who's sitting in this seat. You know, things, things move on and carry on. You kind of know what your staffing needs are and those kind of things, and you can project out for those things. It's not something the board is bound by. It's just a financial plan to have a really good starting point. And when you start looking at, you know, revenue and expenditures, it's really, it's extremely helpful, I think. Regardless of, I mean, somebody could die at a bar and you appoint somebody, you got what you got. You got the budget you got. And most people that run are involved in a budget process before they are elected and, and have some idea of what, what is going on on the board. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, you'll be sworn in in the middle of a budget year, no matter what.
Right.
I mean, at least the middle of one budget year. Renee?
Only as a follow-up, based on what we did at the CIP, and I hope we're going to have some more discussion because we didn't have thorough discussion in the afternoon of that meeting, is where do we stand, what, based on guidance that was given, where do we stand revenue-wise with those expenditures? Does that make sense? That's kind of telling us how much money we've kind of said we might spend to date. And what impact does that have?
I think, I think Amy was able to provide us like a spreadsheet last year and change things on the fly as we added, deleted, or whatever.
Right.
It gave us a really good, good picture.
So a, a spreadsheet with a summary of the items that we did make firm decisions on, and then highlight the things that we still need to have discussion on, and at least have a preliminary total would be helpful.
Yeah, and, and absent any of this, my, my plan would be to present to you a budget at your main meeting as a recommended manager's budget that you would have subsequent workshops on to give me further direction. So we still have workshops scheduled after I present the budget.
We have one so far, but I guess I was going back to, I didn't think we finished or had a thorough discussion during our CIP when it came down to 401K and so forth. So how do you know what to put in the budget if we didn't have that discussion? So how do you know what to put in the budget if we didn't have that discussion?
Yeah, well...
And I can tell you already, I'm going to recommend that we take all personnel decisions out of the budget, because we can do that anytime we want to during the year. That's not necessarily a budget item. I mean, we could talk about the classification and pay plan and all, we can do any of that outside the budget process.
I was just trying to, to ask if we were going to give the manager any direction before, since we didn't really, that, that day was like a day from hell, from, lack of a better term, because I don't think we finished what was on the list, since most of us weren't prepared for what was on the list.
We have a board meeting scheduled for the 17th, the second meeting of the month.
I won't be there, that's CRC. Just let you know, I have...
Can't do it then.
I'll just let you know that I have a, and it's been on my calendar, I guess, that Ross somehow didn't have 17th on my calendar.
Can we do something on the 16th?
We can move, having a planning board, we did that before.
Do afternoon?
In the afternoon, I can, I can do on the 16th.
I'm not going to have finance officer that week.
You don't have a finance officer, okay.
You're just telling me what to do, I don't need her.
Oh, you need your finance officer, Cliff.
You can just tell me what to do.
You need to have her sit, you need to have her sit in front and center.
How about the following week? 23rd, 24th?
23rd, better for me.
Either one works fine for me.
23rd, then? Okay, what time does everybody want? 9:00 AM?
Sure, that works. My come back for you.
Okay, 23rd at 9:00 AM.
And this is to pick up where we left off?
Left off, yes.
And you'll tell me, I will give you, I'll give you documentation the Thursday before. So any follow, any backup will be to you on April the 18th. But I just ask, if you have items that you want, staff to be prepared for.
I love that chart I asked for.
We got it.
Two, intended, one scheduled for two that day, apparently.
All right, 23rd at 9:00 AM?
Works.
Okay. All right. Don't want me to forget to recess this meeting to the workshop.
Mayor, may I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to address. Part of the information we got last time was not broken out, because we have it broken out so that we know exactly what we're discussing.
Yes, ma'am.
And not lumped together.
I believe I'm on the same page.
Thank you.
All right. Webb?
That's it. Thank you.
I don't have anything else. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Can I?
I'm sorry, yes?
Just to make sure I'm clear on what, what we're doing with ADUs and the UDO. Is the board expecting, I want to make sure we haven't skipped a public hearing on an ADU, because we haven't established whether or not there'll be a public hearing for the ordinance that we're bringing back to you from the planning board at the May meeting. Is your plan to adopt an ADU ordinance ahead of the UDO? Or is your plan to put the ADU ordinance into UDO and the whole thing be adopted? Because I don't want to leave here thinking you're having a public hearing in May, because you're, you're not.
We can have one, but not act on it.
Right.
Just to get citizen input.
That's just not clear. Are you adopting an ADU ordinance before you adopt the UDO? Because if you are, you need to have a public hearing.
That was part of what I was trying to get at. He said it much clearer.
Okay, that was the expectation.
Yeah.
That's not, we have not established a public hearing for the, board hadn't acted on advertising a public hearing for anything.
For the, for, okay, so, given, and, and given that we made that request today, that that, that ADU go to the planning board at the April meeting?
Yes, sir.
Come to us at the next meeting, I think part of the reason for doing that is that we need to make decisions. I mean, we're not going to make those decisions until we have to make those decisions, and we don't know where the UDO is going to be exactly, and so my understanding was that we were going to have an ordinance that we could act on if we were so...
Schedule a public hearing before May.
Something we adopted three to two, as I remember. Something we adopted three to two, I wrote beside that.
So, so we're clear, we're, we're advertising a public hearing on the ADU ordinance at the May meeting?
I'm not clear, Carol, and we'll have to look at what the motion was.
ADU.
It was, it was under the ADU discussion, and there was discussion about how do you act on a public hearing when you don't know what you're acting on?
Right, ordinarily, you, you would get the, you would have the, the planning board meeting on the 19th, you would advertise for the public hearing at the May meeting to be held in June. That's ordinarily what you would do, so that's why I'm, I'm asking you now, are you, do you want us to advertise today? Is today essentially the consent item to advertise the public hearing in May?
And just, just to expand on that, Cliff, just, just to make this clear, ordinarily, after the planning board has acted, this board then, on its consent agenda, votes to approve having a public hearing at a later meeting. That's what you're pointing out, right?
Right. And this would be that meeting, if you want to do it in May.
The May meeting would be the meeting at which they would vote on having the public hearing. I think it's the logistics that you're outlining.
Right.
But we could have a mid-month May meeting.
You could. And...
My head's spinning. Are you saying that the board should take an action now to schedule a public hearing for May?
If that's their expectation.
On something we don't know about.
If that's their expectation, they have not advertised the public hearing.
I'm not doing that. I don't know about it. Haven't seen it. You want me to schedule something that we hadn't even seen?
Well, that...
No, I thought we had solved this three hours ago.
Two board members that think we're having a public hearing in May. And I don't know about the rest of it. I'm just asking, are we having a public hearing in May? If we are, we need to vote to advertise it.
And you've also said that if we have a public meeting in May, and we see it and we make changes, then we have to have a second public meeting on the changes?
If they're substantive changes.
Correct. So why would we have a public meeting on something that we don't know what we're looking at, and we may make changes to, without making changes and then asking the public meeting?
As a matter of process, you do it every meeting.
Not for public hearings.
We do, on their own consent agenda. We had one set today, to approve today, but it was removed.
It's not on common side of public hearing.
It's removed, because we haven't seen it, and we don't even have the, a date that when we're going to get to see it.
Yeah, I mean, the one today was to ask for us to set a public hearing when we hadn't even completed the administrative process. So we don't, we were set, trying to set a public hearing, and we don't even know when it was going to be, we were trying to set a public hearing, and we don't even know when it's going to be done. And that just didn't make any sense at all. You got to exhaust your administrative processes before you go sit as a legislative board. I don't see how we could be acting in the legislative role until we finished our administrative role.
Does agree or agree?
I agree.
I'm sorry.
I ask if you agree or disagree.
I agree, I agree with that. I mean, again, the downside is, it's, it's just, it's premature, because if, if the planning board doesn't take action or hasn't come back with a product that you're really interested in considering, you've scheduled a public hearing without really knowing that you're going to have something you're going to be considering at that date, that you'll have something available to consider. You know, sometimes you, I mean, there have been cases, there have been situations, I can't cite any, but I know you've had situations in the past where there was a sense of urgency in getting something adopted, and so you wanted the planning board to pass on something, because they don't have to approve it, they just have to take action on it before it comes before the board for its public hearing. But what I'm getting at is, there have been times when the planning board has considered something for a series of meetings before this board then decided to schedule a public hearing on, on what they've approved. And that, I mean, this could be one of those cases, it may not be, but my point is, you may or may not really have something recommended or approved, or even acted on by the planning board at its April meeting for you to approve a public hearing for at your May meeting, if that makes sense.
So we should never put anything on a consent agenda moving forward unless we've taken action on that item?
No, unless the planning board has already taken action on it. I think that's been the practice, to have the planning board act before it's put on your consent agenda.
And I, I think just as a matter, and I agree entirely with that, but I also think as a matter of practicality, that we shouldn't put anything, advertise a public hearing on something we haven't even finished or know what it is.
I'm not saying I disagree, I think that somewhere in here with the events of today, some people had an understanding a couple of months ago of if you have any questions about the UDO, or things you want the technical committee to consider, please submit them. Some people did, some people didn't. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us to be on the same page, and maybe we're, you know, something got lost somewhere, because everybody didn't take the same, the same action to provide the input that was requested, so that the technical committee could move forward to bring the information back to us today. So moving forward, I just hope that we'll all be clear, and if we're asked to provide input, we need to all provide it the same way, and, and maybe stress that, you know, in writing, whatever, or, because I think for, you know, us saying sub-verbally at some meeting or another meeting doesn't provide clear guidance to staff when they specifically ask for something in writing that they need to present to another committee for consideration.
And I would just say, the mayor asked for that at the retreat. It was documented, it was in writing, and wasn't addressed.
We have, anyway.
Back to the motion that we had, and the ordinance that we were expecting to see in May, it sounds, I'm sorry, on the, on the ADU, it sounds like it is not possible for us to have a public hearing at that date for action.
And so you'll call for the public hearing in June, and you'll have it in July?
If we approve it in May, we can call for it in May.
You can have, you can advertise in May for it to be in June, and have it.
Unless we have a mid-month.
Yes.
Yep.
We'll, mid-month, we'll have it up till...
It's 10 days.
You could.
Mid-month is the same meeting, though, right, John?
It's the same meeting, but it's simply a matter of giving notice that it will be taken up at a certain time. So you can still advertise for a public hearing to be held later in the, at a later date as part of the same meeting.
The first and 15th should be okay.
The first and 15th.
It gives you enough time, doesn't it? I guess that's the main question.
That meets the requirements. Technically, if we had a mid-month meeting...
Okay, so that will be on the May agenda, first meeting in May agenda. Anything else?
Something else?
Cliff, what you got?
Nope.
Go ahead, spit it out. I was just going to give an update on, is, are we still under Board of Commissioners' agenda?
Yes.
I went to Wave Riders last Thursday evening, where the, the SOTA group and Oceana were both there, and SOTAs stop offshore drilling in the Atlantic, and Peg Howell, who was an engineer and the head of an oil rig for many years, was our spokesperson, and she is the head of the SOTA group in South Carolina. So she knows firsthand what oil and gas drilling does. She can, she knows exactly. It was a really good event, it was very well-attended. I made a bunch of notes here, and there's, I believe I emailed this to all of you, but I wanted to let you know some of the, the most important parts are that we are literally 60 to 90 days out from seismic testing here. So it's the 90-day comment period for Bohem, it's already begun. We could be having seismic testing here as early as this summer. The oil and gas leases will be let next, in 2020, and that we are the number-one source just off our coast, which is called the Manio Prospect. We are, we are in the bull's eye, it is us, and the court order that happened the other day does not protect us. It is only north of us, from basically the Virginia line north, or the Chesapeake Bay.
The Norfolk Canyon north.
Yeah, Norfolk Canyon north. So I just think it's in, I know we're, we've all been on the same page on this for many, many years. At this time, it's just really important for us to all be vocal about it, and for our citizens to be vocal about it. I really appreciate the mayor and our chairman, commissioner, Chairman Woodard, really reaching out to Burr and Tillis's office to try to persuade them to protect what we love and hold so dear. And there is a slide, I believe, Roberta, it might be the very last one, that has their contact information, should anyone want that, so they can contact them. I'd also like to really commend Representative Hennig, who has signed a letter and passed a letter to his colleagues about stopping the surveys and offshore drilling. He's having difficulty getting a sign on. We probably also need to contact our senator, our representative. Hennig is on board, but Senator Steinberg is not, as of this date, so he needs to be contacted as well, so he can protect everything that we, everything that we hold dear. This is probably one of the biggest issues facing us and facing our coast, and once it's done, it's done. It is, it is forever, and there's, there's no turning back at that point. The Manio Prospect is 45 miles off our coast in 5,000 feet of water. Additionally, let me give you a little bit of other information. Hold on.
While you're...
Go ahead.
While you're looking for that, one of the points that we made in the meeting last Friday, because Senator Tillis has taken the position that he was in favor of testing in order to see what's out there, that information is proprietary, it belongs to the companies that do the testing, it does not have to be shared with us, it does not have to be shared with the senator. The next thing that will happen, if they find structures that, that are likely sources of oil, the next thing that can happen is a drilling permit. It's not a report about whether there's oil out there or not, it's an application to drill.
They don't have to do seismic testing to drill, but, but they will. It's actually 87,000 miles of lines that they've requested, which will run every 12 seconds, 24/7, for months, through 11,000 feet of water off the slope of the continental shelf. Also, I've got so many notes here. We are the number-three exporter of oil, the third-largest exporter behind Australia and Qatar, the US is, and the LNG gas facility, there's one in Charleston, South Carolina, and there's one in Cove Point, Maryland. If this continues, there's likely to be one in Norfolk as well. The first 20 years of our liquid natural gas is already promised to India and China. It is not going to benefit anybody in the United States, nobody. That's how much we have already. So this is not being done for our benefit, or anybody's benefit, really, in America. It is being done to sell overseas and—for profits.
Yeah, for profit. Thank you, Suzy. I'm sorry I was not able to attend that.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Manager?
Sir.
Seeing nothing else, we will adjourn to the—
Are you going to recess to the April—
I'm sorry, recess to the workshop, which is on—I just had that date, so I didn't—
April 23, is what I wrote down.
Yes.
Which is a Tuesday.
Recess to 23rd at 9:00 AM. Thank you.